Trustees.
Thank you. And the matters for executive session discussion this evening, under Personnel Matters, or Volunteer Applications for the Environmental Commission, update on Police Personnel Matters, Village Clerk Reappointment, and under Contract Matters, update on the PBA Contract.
Could you add SOPAC restructuring contract matter?
I just saw adding SOPAC restructuring as a contract matter. Is there a motion?
I move.
Moved by Trustee Rosner, seconded by Trustee Davis Ford. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We'll be back out here at 8:00 PM. Okay, thank you everybody for being here. I'd like to reconvene this regular meeting of
My pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stay standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, a couple of announcements before we really get started here. The sewer bills for 2013. The Tax Collector's Office is going to be sending out the bills. Next month, the due date is May 20th for returning those bills, and there is a grace period that is extended through June 20th. The annual spring cleanup. Public Works has begun to collect leaf lawn garden rakings. They started on April 1st. Your yard waste, leaves, clippings, and rakings must be bagged in a biodegradable bag in place of the curb, and small branches need to be bundled up. Collection continues until May 13th. South Orange River Day will take place on Sunday, May 5th, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. down at the Duck Pond. This annual community gathering is organized by the South Orange Environmental Commission to help clean up the railway river and promote environmental awareness. At this year's event, there will be live music, an ecology walk, soccer clinic from Columbia High School, and a whole lot more. If you do want to learn a little bit more about River Day, you can go to soriverday.org. Also, another reminder that there is a municipal election on Tuesday, May 14th, for three, four-year village trustee positions. Polls will be open from 6:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. The deadline for new voters to register is April 23rd, which is tomorrow. So if you haven't registered yet, please do. Deadline to apply for a vote-by-mail ballot for this municipal election is May 7th, and if you want a little bit more information or have questions about the election, you can contact our clerk's office at clerk@southorange.org or call 973-378-7715, extension 1. So we have a couple proclamations and presentations this evening. The first one that I am excited to be able to present is a proclamation recognizing the 65th anniversary of Seton Hall's great radio station, WSOU. So I'll quickly read this here. Whereas the Township of South Orange Village is pleased to recognize the partnership between Seton Hall University and South Orange, and whereas WSOU signed on the air on April 14th, 1948, and was the first college-owned FM station in the state of New Jersey and one of the first FM stations in the United States, and whereas in addition to being the broadcast home for all Seton Hall athletics, WSOU has been acknowledged as a highly rated student-run and professionally managed, award-winning radio station, with participation by over 100 active students and several community programmers. Whereas WSOU has earned national recognition and honors, including a Peabody Award, as well as selections as College Station of the Year and Medal Station of the Year, whereas WSOU is one of the first New Jersey stations to begin streaming online in the mid-1990s, transmitting its 2,400-watt signal from the University's South Orange campus, reaching all five boroughs of New York City and much of northern and central New Jersey, with more than 120,000 listeners each week. And whereas WSOU has played a pivotal role in music genres within the New York market, including bands such as Chorus, System of a Down, Anthrax, my favorite, Five Finger Death Punch, and My Chemical Romance, therefore, be it proclaimed, the Village President of the Township of South Orange Village, on behalf of the Board of Trustees, has hereby officially expressed its sincerest recognition to WSOU 89.5 FM, as they celebrate 65 years of successful radio operation and excellence. Congratulations. And we did have one more proclamation tonight, although I'm not sure...oh, there we go. Perfect timing. So this is a proclamation that we wanted to be able to present this evening at the Board of Trustees meeting, and it is proclaiming the Days of Remembrance from April 7th to April 14th for the 37th Annual Interfaith Holocaust Memorial Service. Whereas the Holocaust was a systematic persecution and annihilation of European Jewry and decimation of countless others for racial, ethnic, and national reasons by Nazi Germany and its collaborators between 1933 and 1945, and whereas the history of the Holocaust offers an opportunity to reflect on the moral responsibilities of individuals, societies, and governments, and whereas in 1980, Congress established the Days of Remembrance as the nation's annual commemoration of the Holocaust and created the United States Holocaust Memorial Museum as a permanent living memorial to the victims, and whereas the United States Holocaust Memorial Council has designated the week of April 7th through April 14th, 2013, as the Days of Remembrance of the Victims of the Holocaust. Whereas the 36th Annual Interfaith Holocaust Memorial Service, cosponsored by the South Orange Maplewood Annual Interfaith Holocaust Remembrance Committee and the South Orange Maplewood Interfaith Clergy Association, has become a steadfast and honored tradition in our community, reminding the people of South Orange Village to remain vigilant against hatred, persecution, and tyranny, and to always redigate themselves to the principles of individual freedom and respect for all people. Now therefore, I, Alex Torpe, Village President of the Township of South Orange Village, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, do hereby proclaim the week of April 7th through April 14th, 2013, as Days of Remembrance within the Village of South Orange, in memory of the victims of the Holocaust, and in honor of the survivors, rescuers, and liberators, and call upon all citizens of South Orange to make a commitment to promoting tolerance and human dignity, confronting hatred whenever and wherever it may occur.
We had our service at Seton Hall on April 14th. It was the first time in many years that we had it at Seton Hall, and I just want to thank the committee and thank the residents of South Orange for being very cooperative and helping us to have a successful event. Thank you very much.
Give your name for the record, please. Your name for the record.
Jim Ferajaro.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to everybody who helped put that Remembrance service together. I think for all of us that were there, it was a very powerful and moving ceremony. Okay, our first presentation this evening is for Villager of the Month from the South Orange Community Relations Committee.
Tonight, the Village of South Orange recognizes and honors a true village treasure, Ann Alexander. For 31 years, Mrs. Alexander was teacher extraordinaire at Jefferson School, where she taught 3rd and 4th graders from South Orange and Maplewood. Initially, she taught all subjects, even health, but later did team teaching with her fellow teachers. Ann's effectiveness as a teacher was always apparent to her students and their parents, as she inspired her kids to speak correctly as she spoke, to reach out to the larger world, often by writing letters, and to be prudent savers. She was a big proponent of U.S. savings bonds. This was in addition to teaching them to read and write very well. Her former students still stop her on the street to tell her how they're doing and to introduce her to their children. She also manages to stay in touch with many, many of her kids scattered all over the country via email. After retiring from Jefferson in 2001, Ann returned to school, to Seton Hall University, to become a certified teacher of the handicapped. She chose to be formally trained to work with children with autism, an interest which had been spawned by a brilliant little boy she taught at Jefferson, who, in retrospect, she realized had been on the autism spectrum. Ann then brought her considerable skills and new certification to children with autism at the Developmental Learning Center in New Providence. Looking for yet another change from education, this time she switched gears and attended Fairleigh Dickinson University and earned a master's degree in administrative science. But never very far from children, back in South Orange and Maplewood, Ann served as a volunteer tutor in our ACHIEVE program, where her efforts were recognized with the Dubrow Volunteer Award. A Seth Boyden parent imposed on Ann to bring her considerable education skills to the Ivy Hill School in Newark, where she began mentoring teachers. That was until the principal there asked her to work with a group of students who would be entering 4th grade the following year and who showed great potential but needed a little push. These dozen children were from homes where the majority of the families did not speak English as the first language. So for five mornings a week, except for Tuesdays when she teaches until 2:00 o'clock, Ann is these kids' literacy teacher. After working with her for a year, 10 of the 12 passed the Grade 4 New Jersey ASK test. The next year, they passed the Grade 5 New Jersey ASK test, and the two who were not yet proficient still managed to raise their scores significantly, and I think we have great hopes for those kids, too. Ann has continued working with the same group of students in their 6th grade, and she has them reciting Jabberwocky by Lewis Carroll and writing letters, including to President Obama, who answered them. She says, "When you see these kids achieving, it is such a joy." A graduate of Kane University, Mrs. Alexander professes to be a proponent of what she has dubbed "The Strickland Method of Teaching." That is, voice low, look right at your students, and respond to their answers to questions with "it could be," rather than say "that is not correct." This method was introduced to Ann at Kane in the 1970s by Dr. Dorothy Strickland, a renowned professor of reading and literacy. Ann says she was a magnificent professor at Kane. Last February, Ann attended an Abbott Leadership Institute at Rutgers, where she encountered her inspiration, Dr. Strickland, now Professor Emerita at Rutgers and a member of the State Board of Education, at a conference under the leadership of Junius Williams. Ann was delighted to share her success with the Strickland Method of Teaching with its creator. Ann believes that you should not stop just because you're retired, so she continues her membership in professional organizations such as the New Jersey Association of Gifted Children and the New Jersey Association of Professional Mediators, as well as the New Jersey Council of the Teachers of English. And she also travels into New York to attend Lucy Cawkins workshops at Teachers College, Columbia, because, she says, "You have to keep abreast of everything." Her students still receive the most up-to-date instruction. A longtime resident of South Orange, Ann Alexander is one of the founders of the Warwick Avenue Neighborhood Association, which is, she says, "A really good thing," attested to by the fact that after 30 years, it is still a vibrant part of the block, thanks, she says, to Amy Don, who works very hard keeping the homeowners list up to date. A highlight of the association for Ann is her memory of the walk which passed down their Warwick Avenue block when the Torah was carried from Temple Shari to Philo's East Orange home to its new home at Temple Israel in South Orange. The trees were festooned with blue and white streamers, and the children waved their flags of Israel. Ann says that the children were delighted to see Mr. Barokas, the principal from Jefferson School at that time, walking with the congregation. She also notes that her block is still gung-ho and like a family. Ann and her husband raised their own family on that block, the two Alexander daughters, who are here this evening, our graduates of Columbia High School, where their proud mom remembers that Shelley was captain of the cheerleading squad and Tracy played the harp in the string ensemble. Mrs. Alexander has left a special mark on each of the kids she's taught, from Jefferson to the children at the Developmental Center, to her ACHIEVE kids, to the children at Ivy Hill. She's unique in her ability to get through to all kinds of kids. And they remember her. A student from the 80s remembers that Ann was committed to self-discipline, so she thought her students should be, too. She gave each student laminated self-discipline cards as learning tools. That student also memorized the preamble to the Constitution, which she can still recite verbatim. One of Ann's present students at the Ivy Hill School recently responded to a reminder by proudly using one of his vocabulary words when he declared to Ann, "It's embedded in my brain." Ann Alexander, you are embedded in the lives and hearts of your students, past and present. South Orange Village is honored to call you our Villager of the Month.
Thank you, Ann. And I'd like to thank all my neighbors and my family.
You have to speak into the mic, because...
Oh, in the mic. I'd like to thank all of my neighbors and my family came tonight, and to say that I'm glad to see Trustee Bauer. I have a son in portra, as I have many sons in portra, Mrs. Ford, and recognizing all the trustees, thank you very much for this wonderful night. As I told Robin Patrick, I said, "I am absolutely surprised. I am stunned. I'm very grateful, and I'd like to thank the South Orange Community Relations Committee." You know, I've never had two interviews in the same week, and I've never been interviewed before, and I really feel like a rock star.
Thank you to the...
I just want to add something.
Sure.
I know the Alexanders for a very long time, and especially your husband also, who's a very stoic man, and your husband, for those who don't know, was a dentist, and where she's warm and vibrant and whatever, he barely cracked a smile, but he was a doggone dentist. And my whole family, as a kid, I went and whatever. When my daughter was born, he said, "Oh, I don't take kids anymore," but she charmed him, and he made an exception. And she loved going to see him, and she could make him smile. So I have just so many good memories of your family and our family, that I just was so happy to see you here, being recognized for what you did, and it's just incredible. How do you find the time to do all of that?
I'd like to echo that sentiment. I think, you know, these days, there's so much discussion all the time around, you know, public employees and teachers, and it's amazing to take a second and step back and think about how incredibly beneficial of an impact a teacher can have on a student's life. And I remember not too long ago, being a student myself and needing a little bit of encouragement, and I remember teachers who were able to, you know, kind of help push me along and make that happen, and so, you know, thank you for, you know, everything that you've done, and, you know, I wish we could have all the students, you know, come here tonight, and, you know, and thank you, all the people who you've benefited, but we'd be here all night. But thank you again. And as...we might be here all night anyway. And thank you again to the Community Relations Committee for doing this. Next, I would like to ask the Community Coalition on Race to come forward.
Tough act to follow, Fred.
And by the way, he's done very well since then. And I'll tell him about tonight. So it's an honor to be here and to hear about your award. We're here, we don't need that. That would just lengthen things. We're going to do a brief account of our events and activities that have either happened in the not-too-distant past or will be happening in the near future. I'm here with Nancy Gagné, our Executive Director, and Audrey Rowe, our Program Director. And they will bring you up to date on that history. And I'm going to talk briefly about a forum that we have coming up on May 15 at Morrow Church, which I think will be of interest. So we'll start in with Ms. Gagné and her quick update.
Good evening, Nancy Gagné, Executive Director of the South Orange Maplewood Community Coalition on Race. You do have some information in front of you, a PowerPoint. I'm not going to touch on everything. You have our 2012 Annual Report and our At a Glance, which covers a lot of the things that we've done over the last 16 years in the community. Two things I want to mention in events and forums. We do an MLK Martin Luther King Observance and Volunteer Fair each year, and last year we had a South Orange resident, Dr. Khalil Gibran Muhammad, who is the Director of the Schaumburg Center in Harlem. He's a scholar and a great speaker. He spoke at our event. We had over 500 people. And this year, in 2013, we had Junius Williams, who I think was mentioned earlier, the Director of the Abbott Institute, who shared his personal experiences during the civil rights era, also about, between a little over 400 people this year. It was a marvelous talk that we managed to get videotaped this year, so if you didn't attend or weren't able to be there, you can see it on our website. One of the things that we've been trying to do with the MLK event is to grow the volunteerism aspect, and over the last few years, that has grown each year, and we're really excited about that. Not just bringing volunteers to other local organizations in South Orange and Maplewood, but getting people to volunteer over the course of that weekend, to make it really a weekend on and not a weekend off. And at the event, we have instant impact activities, and people report how excited they are about them. As Mr. Perfetta mentioned, he's going to talk about the upcoming Conversations on Race. As you know, that's one of our signature events. We hold it each year to discuss race-related issues in the community and beyond. Last year, we had two speakers. We also had Dr. Muhammad and Barbara Heisler, thought leaders in the area of race relations and other areas connected to our work. We also had planned a fall forum on sustainable integration solutions, and that will be part of the upcoming Spring Conversations on Race. Unfortunately, Storm Sandy got in our way. So some of the information we really are excited to bring out to the community about where we are in terms of residential integration and social relationships and racial interaction in our community, we will be talking about then. Some of our community-building programs include each year Integration Through the Arts. For the last couple of years, we've been bringing children's theater using SOPAC. The first two years, we were in the loft. This year, we were fortunate enough to be able to be in the theater. It was a wonderful, professional production using lots of local talent, nationally-known, internationally-known singers and actors and actresses, live music. We always get a great response, and this year it was really exciting to have parents in the theater who had never been to SOPAC before and their children. So they were excited to be in that space and excited to hear about what the Coalition does. We also ran a forum that's been, this was the second time we've done this called Facts, Fears, and Folklore at Columbia High School, and the intention there is to engage parents, staff, and students in bringing the message out about how great the high school is, and to dispel myths and fears, and to talk about the things that parents whose children are moving up to the high school may be concerned about. And interestingly, this year, we had a lot of people coming who were interested in moving to the community but really wanted to know about the high school. And our students speak beautifully and wonderfully with great appreciation for the education they get there. Okay, and now I think I am handing this over to... Oh, one thing I left out about Integration Through the Arts. We've also done a photography workshop focused on capturing images of diversity and inclusion and integration in the community for the last two years, and those have been shown in art shows at the Artist Studio Tour. This year, it's a bookmaking project. It's a series of workshops. People are writing poetry, they are working with professional writers and artists to produce a community book that we think will be a great representation of who we are in South Orange and Maplewood. And on that, let me bring up our Program Director to talk about marketing.
Thank you, Nancy. I will be very brief, but first I'd like to also congratulate Mrs. Alexander, who was a very active member of our touring committee for years, I think since its very inception. So congratulations and thank you. I'm going to very quickly tell you about three things that you wouldn't know if I were not sharing it with you tonight. Two of them are under the area of pro-integrative marketing, and the others under volunteerism. You're well aware that the Coalition has done face-to-face tours for prospective home buyers for years. And now we're bringing ourselves into the electronic age by taking that tour and making it a virtual video tour, which will give us wider reach. We are working with professional producer, director, and we're going to be capturing images of both Maplewood and South Orange, condensing it into a video of under five minutes that will be available to prospective home buyers. We can use it for multiple purposes, and we're certainly hoping that you will be a part of that process. We currently will be shooting in May and hope to have our first edit in June, so stay tuned. The other item I'd like to mention is that about a new loan program that we're converting from our previous PRISM program. We're going to be sponsoring a home improvement program, and in this challenging economy, it's something that many times, we don't have that little extra money to fix the steps, the stairs, the porch, whatever. And we know from an integration standpoint that a well-maintained community is one that is attractive to all people, and that's what we want for all of our neighborhoods. So the Coalition will be making this loan available. We'll have more details for you and for the community, and we hope to have it available by 4th quarter of this year. And the last item I'd like to mention is in the area of volunteerism. The Coalition is putting together a civic institute where we will be helping to prepare, recruit, and educate citizens to serve in government committees as well as civic organizations. We know that there are many things that get in the way of people being able to serve, time being one of them. But also, sometimes people don't feel prepared, they feel a little bit intimidated. So with this institute, we will be bringing information to residents who sign up with the expectation that once they've completed the six-week program, they will be willing, they will commit to volunteer. The institute will cover things like personality, leadership styles, group dynamics, problem-solving. So people who participate will not only be prepared to serve the community, but they will have life skills that they can take away, and we hope that that will be one of the things that attracts them to participate with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Audrey and Nancy. So I want to just bring to your attention this forum, especially for May 15. I want your public, your South Orange public, as well as the trustees, to know about this because I think it's a special forum. Nancy mentioned it's part of the Conversations on Race series, but you could just as easily call this forum a Conversation on the Coalition. The tagline is, stealing something from Mayor Koch, "How are we doing?" And by way of this forum, what we're really looking for is, we're not looking for people to preach to the choir. We're looking for people to tell us candidly what they think the Coalition is all about, what its successes have been, what its failures have been. I think it was Thomas Edison who said that, I just learned this about a month ago when I went to West Orange, "It's the experiments that fail that taught him more than the ones that succeeded." So you need to know what you're doing that's wrong as well as right. So we're welcoming all kinds of comment at this forum. It'll be held in Morrow Church on May 15. You're probably aware of the fact that there have been changes in what I call the facts on the ground regarding integration in South Orange and Maplewood. If you take the census between 2000 and 2010, you're going to find, and I'm sure you've seen, that residential integration is pretty darn good in these communities. As a matter of fact, in South Orange, it's better than Maplewood, and it's really quite excellent across the town. What is not so great is the involvement of persons of color in the civic life of the community. That isn't so hot in South Orange or Maplewood. And I can tell you, as a member of the Maplewood Township Committee and as a former mayor, we tried real hard to make strides in that regard, but it's a daunting task. And I think the Coalition is well-positioned to emphasize that aspect of its mission now and give the kind of help to the governing bodies that you could use to make sure that we make the necessary advances in that regard. You could also say, by the way, that although our integration is pretty darn good residentially between persons of color and whites, the integration is not as broad as some might like it to be. So for example, our representation of Asians and Hispanics in these two communities is not on a level with the other groups. And some people have mentioned that to us and asked us what are going to do about that. So that's something that we want to debate. Now, one thing we're not going to change about the Coalition is our mission. Our mission is racial integration. How we define racial integration, well, that's a topic for discussion, but we will not change that mission. We will stick by that mission no matter what. But what we hope to do is get out of this forum suggestions, comments, positive, negative, take it back to our trustees, analyze it, come up with appropriate tactics and programs, and take it from there. This will happen May 15, as I said. We will discuss that, and you'll be the first folks to know what we come up with as a result of this forum. So thank you very much for this opportunity to tell you about this.
What time is that at, Fred? May 15, what time?
7:30. 7:30. Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the update. The next presentation that we have this evening is from Mitchell Fritz from J. Shapiro and Associates, who is going to do a project update on the Village Hall renovation. Mr. Fritz, before you start, if perhaps you could just introduce yourself, your background a little bit, and your role in the project as the construction manager?
Certainly. Thank the board for allowing me this opportunity. My name's Mitchell Fritz. I work for J. Shapiro and Associates. We're construction managers, owners, representatives. Our main office is in Far Hills, New Jersey, and we've been engaged by the Village to perform construction management services for the project to renovate the existing Village Hall. So you asked me to follow two great presenters and presentations. I hope I don't disappoint here. So the intent of this presentation to the board of trustees tonight is just to give an update snapshot on where the project to renovate the existing Village Hall stands The project, I came on board with J. Shapiro and Associates in service to the Village around this time last year, and at that point, the Village had already progressed with some parts of the design and planning and budgeting and some of the early planning stages for the renovation. Our firm began actively participating in the process with the architects, engineers, and village engineer and town, village administrator in May of 2012. So I've been involved firsthand in shepherding the project through what I would say, it's midpoint of design, beginning in the summer of 2012 and then moving through to the end of 2012. During that time, we, the project is to complete an entire renovation, both inside, interior, and exterior of the Village Hall. At the time that we came on board, there had already been some budgets and timeline and planning decisions made going back several years. There had been the presence of asbestos-containing materials identified in the building, and the project was undergoing some decision-making stressors and changes in terms of design scope, some design decisions that needed to be made, and some code-required issues that were becoming apparent. And during the summer of 2012, it became apparent that we were going to need to see what the extent and constraints and levels of asbestos-containing materials that the project was going to have to deal with that exist in the building. Forgive me for a minute, just got to collect myself. So the scope of the project initially didn't include the renovation of the entire interior of the building, although the majority of the exterior of the building was going to be renovated and repaired. During the summer of 2012, it was decided that by including the Building Department Annex interior portion of the building in the renovation, that it was going to become necessary to add HVAC modifications to that part of the building. A code analysis by the architect determined that a portion of the building was going to require fire sprinklers because of the assembly use that exists on the second floor of the building, this meeting room. The Village made a decision to use geothermal well, geothermal well field as a source for its HVAC systems, and with certain decisions that were made along the way, office design and layouts were altered and changed, and some interior wall construction and modifications were added to the project. In the fall of 2012, the Village commissioned a survey to sample existing materials within the building for the levels of asbestos that are contained in those materials, and a report was issued by the consultant late part of 2012, which indicated a greater amount of materials that would need to be abated in order to accomplish the whole renovation scope than was previously forecasted. Apparently, there was a survey that existed that was, had aged some years prior to the planning of this renovation. And with the increase of scope in square foot areas that we're going to renovate under the project, and with threshold levels that had become more restrictive since the last survey, the area of asbestos effectively increased. So it had an effect on some demolition costs that we're going to experience with the project. The next few slides deal with budget and funding. The numbers here are pretty much derived from data that comes out of the Village Administrator's Office. This slide talks about how much funding that the Village has in place to pursue the project. There were prior ordinances that funded a contract with HMR Architects in Princeton, that's old Morgan &amp; Russell Architects in Princeton. There was, the Village passed an ordinance to fund the lion's share of the money for the renovation. Village also obtained New Jersey Historic Trust grant monies and U.S. Department of Interior grant monies for a total of some $6 million and change. Currently, the design, if, to characterize the status of the design on the project, the architect is working on documents that go from a 50% interval to a 90% interval, which means that a lot of the design decisions have been made, and now he's working out a lot of the details that will go into the construction documents. As such, we have the ability to get good data on fees for the architect and for the engineering services that are required. The Village recently... Interior grant monies for a total of some $6 million and change. Currently, the design, if, to characterize the status of the design on the project, the architect is working on documents that go from a 50% interval to a 90% interval, which means that a lot of the design decisions have been made, and now he's working out a lot of the details that will go into the construction documents. As such, we have the ability to get good data on fees for the architect and for the engineering services that are required. The village recently, as I mentioned before, we conducted an asbestos-containing material survey last fall, and recently, we've engaged a design professional to produce bid documents to actually design the removal of the asbestos from the building. So that's the top portion of the list of fees that you see there. In addition, we have the construction manager's fees for a total of about $662,000. Currently, we have budgeted about $600,000 to abate the asbestos that's in the building, which would be a, if you had to do, you can't abate the asbestos while construction's going on. The building has to be cleared first. So the sequence would be to empty the building, bring in a specialty contractor to remove the asbestos-containing materials, clear the building, and then the building would be free to be renovated. So there's a separate line item for asbestos abatement contractor. We also have, the most recent estimate for renovation comes out of the architect's 50% drawings in the $5,191,000 range. Part of the project, we need to vacate the building. So that means that the village needs to acquire swing space for its village hall functions. Initially, the plan was to put temporary modular office building on a site nearby. I'm not sure where the site was, but when exploration of the costs of that came in late in 2012, it was determined that the temporary office trailer option was going to stress the budget. Let's just say stretch the budget. So recently, the village is engaged and talks with landlord nearby that has open office space to lease. So we have the forecasted cost for leasing of the office space at the top of this slide. The savings is realized by not having to pay the utility bills and the cleaning costs to operate this building during the period that you're leasing your temporary space across the street. So here we have a slide with some totals for you. Professional services, that's construction management, engineering, architectural fees, and the like. Total anticipated construction costs, the cost to lease the temporary office space. Barry, I'm going to have to ask you to speak to the geothermal savings. I'm not sure how you amortize that, but if you want to, do it.
Well, it's just an inexact, but the projection is that that, by taking advantage of that upgrade, there is an outlay initially, but you recoup the costs over time, so that this sense is that a real cost of the project if you're going to save, ultimately save some money by doing it.
Okay, sure. So when we apply that savings, then you come to a net. Now, these are anticipated costs. As the design moves closer and closer to completion, the precision with which we can get numbers increases, the variability decreases, but at this point right now, these are the numbers that we're working with.
Mr. Fritz, there's, if I may, there's a couple of numbers that I gave an almost identical presentation two weeks ago, and a couple of numbers that you didn't have, which I did include. Number one, furnishings, furnishing the building, I don't see you have included on there at all.
Okay. So furnishing would be not part of the construction project. I tend to describe for folks in other venues and other settings that if you take the building and turn it upside down, shake it, anything that falls out is not part of the construction budget. So fixtures, furnishings, equipment, computers, movable furnishing, movable equipment wouldn't be included in the construction budget. So that would be something that has a lot of variability depending on how you select those goods, and I, my experience is that it usually comes out of a different budget than construction.
I agree. I'm just saying, in the interest of transparency, for the taxpayers, the money still has to come from the taxpayers.
Oh, absolutely, yes. I agree.
Okay. And one other thing, landscaping, that's one thing, I don't know if you're going to, if you have more slides and you're going to get to that.
So original, no, I don't have, the next slide is a timeline slide, but I can speak to the landscaping issue. Initially, when I came on board, there were, the architect had been awarded a design contract to renovate the exterior of the building, upgrade the deteriorated wood, and fix some of the brick and windows and so on. And then sometime thereafter, and both of these things happened before J. Shapiro and Associates was hired, but sometime thereafter, they were also awarded the task of designing the interior renovation. So the designs kind of took a two, a parallel, but one slightly lagging progression. So when, when we were engaged, I got to see where the drawings were at the time, and it was apparent that the design really ended where the building met the ground outside. So traditionally, the building portion of a construction project really ends at an arbitrary place, five feet outside the building. And the architect's contract at that time didn't contemplate approaching or addressing work that would have to happen beyond that five-foot limit around the building. So subsequently, we have amended the architect's contract to include all the work that it takes to get to the curb, because we have to bring in electric service, water service, sprinkler, water has to come in. With the inclusion of the geothermal field in the design, there's going to be a lot of disturbance in the parking lot that has to get restored. You have sidewalks and so on and so forth. And the contractor would also have to restore disturbed areas that are going to take a beating while he's working around the outside of the building. So at present, these numbers include the design and the work to restore, renovate, address the grounds around the building.
Including the parking lot.
Including the parking lot. So we talked about money, and we talked about some of the things that have affected the design and the budget since this time last year. So now we're going to look at a timeline. At present, the village has entered into talks with landlord for the temporary office space. I understand that it's hopeful that that'll be resolved shortly with a lease, and the space does require a modest amount of renovation order to meet the needs of the office staff that have to occupy those spaces. Village personnel, myself, and the architect for the renovation project have discussed and done some layouts that can, that the landlord be able to use and incorporate into the space. So between now and, say, the end of May, hopefully, there'll be a lease in place. The architect, the village, pardon me, has recently engaged professional design services to design the asbestos abatement. That contract's just recently been signed, so I don't have a good forecast about when that designer is going to be done with his design work, but I'm hopeful that the advertisement for the bids to do the asbestos abatement would be ready to go out onto the street the end of May 2013. Takes several weeks for bidders to review their bid documents and return with bids, bring those bids to the board, pass a resolution, make an award. So we're looking at end of June to make an award for the asbestos abatement contract. Target for being out of this building and into temporary office space is August 1st. At that point in time, the asbestos abatement could take place. The building would be empty. Best estimates right now are something on the order of 60 days to do the abatement of the asbestos in the building. During that period of time, the architect for the renovation will be continuing to work on the documents, the plans and specs for the renovation, but we also have an instance where this project, being a historical project, we have an opportunity to pre-qualify bidders based on their experience, based on the work that they've completed before and their certifications. So the plan is to have the architect produce a request for qualifications, advertise that publicly, have respondents submit their qualifications, evaluate them, have the architect evaluate them, bring his recommendations to the board, and create a select list of bidders that would be eligible to actually put a price proposal in for the renovations. So that's the July to August 2013 line item. You see their contractors pre-qualified. The next step is to have the asbestos abatement completed, have the inside of this building, all of the surfaces that contain, most of the asbestos is contained in wall surfaces and ceiling surfaces within the building. So a contractor would come and take the skin off all these walls that contain asbestos, and thereby revealing the inside framing of the building. That, while nobody really signs up to add the expense of removing asbestos, our plan is to take advantage of the fact that we're going to have a lot of the structure of the building exposed to view. At that point in time, the architect plans on coming through and taking his documents from 90% to 100%. So we're going to make a dash to the finish line for the renovation drawings. And we will have pre-qualified contractors that can join in that examination to walk through and see the building already abated and cleared. It won't have any furniture in it, it won't have any fixtures in it, a lot of the walls will be gone. And the idea is that we can minimize the occurrence of unforeseen site conditions that could generate problems and changes during construction. So that's our October 13 line item in this slide. Somewhere around the end of October, pardon me, yeah, sometime around the end of October, actually, more like the beginning of November, we hope to receive bids for the renovation. Again, receive the bids, evaluate the bids, review them, make a recommendation to the board, board resolution, make an award to a successful contractor, and then allow about a month, although the contract period would start immediately upon award, you'd have to allow about a month for the contractor to pull his permits, mobilize his forces, begin all of the paperwork that it takes before you actually start work, which I anticipate will be right around the end of this year, the 1st of next year. Right now, we're penciling in about a 600-day, 600 calendar day period to do the renovation. If we can tighten that up before we go out to bid, we will. We'll take the advice of the architects and the engineers and folks in our staff and estimators, see if we can tighten that up a little bit. But right now, we're holding a placeholder for 600 days to do the work, which puts a ready-to-move-in date around August 1st, 2015. At that point in time, we bring furniture and then move into the building. The October 1st, 2015 date for final completion is a paperwork administrative date. Traditionally, it's, contractors are allowed about 60 days after they achieve substantial completion to finish up all of their punch list work and do required paperwork to close out the project. So that takes you through the timeline to do the renovation for this building. And that's my final slide, and I'm open for questions.
I have a couple more questions.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
This validates a lot of what I guess of what I shared two weeks ago and provides a little more detail, so thank you. With regard to costs, two other things, or three other things. What is your direct involvement through the duration? Are you generally there through the end when the project is completed, and I think you said October?
Our contract, the, I'm sorry.
No, I know, I know your contract was for two years initially, but you're one year into it, so it was a two-year contract, so I assume there'll be a change order to extend that contract.
I don't know if that's entirely clear, trustee Gober. Our contract is a single amount divided up into two phases. One is pre-construction design, which has a fixed amount of money that transpires every month. And then a separate portion of that money is allocated to construction period services. Both periods are a part-time assignment, and so it's not a full-time, every day, eight hours a day assignment. It is an assignment that was, I guess, arrived at based on what decision-makers thought was the level of effort that would be required. So up until now, it really didn't matter whether I, you know, worked into the midnight oil or not, the regular fee progressed on a fixed rate, and then the same thing would occur during construction. As far as my personal involvement, if...
Or your firm, right?
Yeah, okay. I didn't know whether you meant the individual or not.
No, not the firm.
But no, so the second part is, although the amount of money was allocated at the award, the second part is an option that the village would have to exercise in order to carry our firm forward through into construction. So if the project didn't get built, everything stops at whatever point in time it stops, no harm, no foul. Or if the village decided to engage someone else, then they'd be free to do so as well. But I think that the way it was structured was so that you could allocate funds, so, but I'm not sure the inner workings.
I thought, again, on front of me, it's been a while, but I thought the original contract was two years for a bucket of hours, right, a certain amount of time that you would spend, and so I'm curious what your, kind of your run rate has been. Are you on schedule for where you thought you would be one year in?
Candidly, no.
More or less?
I think the expectations were, first of all, where the project was when we started wasn't as far along as we thought it was going to be. Then there were some decision-making processes that extended some, the period in the fall and end of 2012. Then we had a period of time where there was, the project was a bit, shall I say, on pause, and we've recently resumed, given architect notice to proceed, if you will, with the 90%, the drawings that go from 50 to 90%. So no, there's been some slippage in the schedule.
Right. So to get around to my original question, I, based on what I'm hearing, I would anticipate there would most likely be a change order to extend that two-year contract, because it's going to be more than two years before this is, you know, more than it's done.
I, I'm not privy, I actually don't know the fine print of our contract. I show up and I give my services to the village, so.
Okay. Two other questions, I'll be brief.
Sure.
Other costs that I think weren't accounted for, and I'm curious your thoughts. Number one, storage, right? Just looking around this room, you know, the sled, the chairs, the pictures, right, these chairs, there's a ton of stuff in this building. Some of it's going to be disposed of, but some of it, I imagine, won't be. What is, what is the thought, and what is your involvement as construction manager? Are you involved in helping to vacate this building?
So we provide management services and professional services, so I'm not engaging, our firm's not engaging in moving or storage for folks. But we have talked about it in design progress meetings, and there, apparently, there's some furniture that's going to go into the temporary space, some furniture that's aged out of its useful life, some furniture or fixtures or items that might need to be stored. I'm not really clear on where that storage is, but I know that we've been, we've been discussing that the village needs to make plans for items that it doesn't want to press into service in the temporary space, but does want to keep for future use. For instance, the semi-circular table that you're sitting at. So I'm not clear on the details of where things are being stored. I know there are, they're not just furniture, but there are documents that need to be moved out of the building. The parking authority's already moved to Barrett Street Building. As I have it, there's, there are arrangements being made, and we have discussed them, but not privy to all of the details. Some of the finer details have been kept out of, kept out of our meetings, so.
Okay. And likewise, with storage and the moving itself, I mean, there's costs involved, is simply my point.
Certainly. And we identified those tasks and the need to allocate, you know, funds and resources to those tasks, but by and large, they're being performed what I'll call by owner.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. I think it goes to the administrator, though.
Sure.
The furnishings, fixtures, and furniture, do you have a number together for that? I know we've talked about this previously, sort of, are we doing Chevy Cadillac, or are we putting the old furniture back in again? And what kind of numbers have you come up with?
No, and we have not, I think, come up with concrete numbers. There was an initial number, which the architect, I think, was sort of a ballpark thrown out. I'm not really quite sure where it came from. It was somewhere on the magnitude of $225,000. I, you know, we, you know, for whatever, my recommendation would not be for the Cadillac plan, but it also wouldn't be for the Yugo. You know, I think something good, serviceable, workable. We certainly have time. It'll be, you know, a good two, two and a half years before we're actually moving, two years plus, moving furniture back in. I would certainly look to take advantage of any available state contracts, which I know exist. I know there are outlets for lightly-used corporate-type furniture that I've seen that is very good. So as far as a specific number and what would or wouldn't come back, we haven't gotten to that point in the process. We do know what furniture is going with us to the interim offices. By and large, the most... By and large, the most of the, pretty much most of all the office furniture is coming with us, and so then over the ensuing two, two and a half years is when we really have to make those decisions.
Okay, and, and in terms of, you said, you turned the building upside down, anything that shakes out isn't in it. So I just wanna have kind of an understanding of what that means. Do you put partitions in, toilets, light fixtures, what's in, what's out?
No, so, so it would be, it would, if, if we were talking about your house, and you were selling your house, the chandelier would stay, but the desk lamp wouldn't. So that's the kind of characterization that I would say here, for purposes of budgeting construction costs. If it's movable, loose furniture, it's not part of the construction costs, generally it's a different budget in, in most applications and, and other buildings, so same thing with...
But you're doing the finishing, it sounds like.
I'm sorry?
Finishings you're doing, you're doing...
Paint.
Paint, partitions, toilets, sinks, light fixtures.
Toilets, yeah, toilet fixtures, toilet compartments, sinks, cabinets, any built-in item that, that goes with the building itself is in, is accounted for in the budget.
Okay, and then the two-twenty-five is basically furniture, sounds like.
That was a number that the architect, prior to my arrival here, that was a number that was assigned in the document I saw, where it came from, I don't know.
And then my last curiosity, I just, for a point of clarification, it, it just seems, I guess the term would be goofy, to take out the geothermal upgrade. I understand it's gonna be a savings over time, but it is a capital expense, so I think the number belongs back in the numbers. I'm kind of confused why...
I would say that, I did, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
That's...
I took, I took a brief look at analysis that I did of the fifty percent estimate, and the fifty percent, that, that, the intervals from a prior estimate, I believe, was two-thousand-nine, and two-thousand-nine's estimate was an escalation multiplier, a simple percentage multiplier, times a number that was developed sometime before then. I, I'm not sure what year it was. But in any event, both those numbers were before my involvement. When the architect got to fifty percent drawings, they also have an estimating component to their contract. Our contract says, I check their estimate, so I did an analysis of their estimate. The HVAC cost, the HVAC cost in the building went down by virtue of choosing a geothermal system. The equipment, the ductwork, the wiring, the piping goes down, and then, and a comparable number is the value of the well field. So you kind of netted almost zero by going to the geothermal field. Now, having said that, you disturb the site, which has costs, and you have, you have other costs that kind of like bleed out from choosing the geothermal, but the net-net, the raw skin and bones of the geothermal really don't increase the value of the contract that much.
I think, if I correct my wrong, I think you're referring to the negative one-hundred-eight-eight-thousand on that slide.
Negative one-hundred-eight-eight-thousand is a number that was arrived that, that I understand represents savings of utilities and operation lifecycle costs, as opposed to a conventional system that requires either some sort of fuel source, whether it be gas or oil, and then the maintenance that comes with fuel-burning machinery. But geothermal is...
But that's operation down the line, that's not the capital construction cost, right?
It's a savings, it's a savings, a revenue savings.
But we're not taking a subtraction for, we're putting in new windows that are gonna be more energy efficient.
Sure.
We're putting in, you know, LED lights that are more efficient. So I, I think it's...
I, I agree with...
Trustee Gould's point, just...
I agree with this. But the HVAC, the HVAC system, traditional, there are different levels of HVAC. There's, there's a conventional one, there's also more energy-efficient ones that were, that were priced out also originally.
Sure, and I, and I can't speak to the motivations of why the geothermal was chosen, but...
No, I'm not saying that, but I'm just saying, when you compare back to HVAC, there's HVAC and there's, you know, there's traditional, there's different levels of energy efficiency that you can have in, in different levels.
Agreed.
Right, so, so those, some of those systems are more expensive, and then they save money over the years, the same way geothermal would.
Agreed.
Yeah, so you can't really just have this conversation and a three-minute analysis like this. You'd have to go get different estimates and...
Right.
Agreed, okay.
Well, the savings that were projected, that was based on a, from the geothermal engineer, and it did compare conventional high-efficiency HVAC system versus a geothermal system, and it projected long-term savings. And, and the feeling was, I think, that the decision was made to add the geothermal specifically because it would pay itself off and then start saving money. And, and so, you know, obviously, you could choose not to do it and then just pay higher utility bills, and I guess then you'd add that in to the equation. And that was sort of the rationale, in feeling like it was, it was an additional cost upfront in the project, albeit spread out over bond payments, so as you're paying down, you know, maybe arguably higher bonds, that portion of it is being made up in utility savings over the same twenty-five-year period or whatever.
I think it would've been probably clearer to have it on a different line item, to have the capital costs and then say, and oh, by the way, minus one-eight-eight over time for the...
You could do it the same way, expenses.
Well, I, I think there are a lot of other opportunity savings and opportunity costs that are associated to the project, such as, as we've been discussing, the opportunity of saving because the building will be very efficient against what we would've been paying in utility bills. The other is, is that in furniture, the furniture here needs to be replaced. Should we count it today, those costs which we're going to incur when we move back into the building, or are those the costs that we would've had anyhow in replacing the furniture? There's, there's a lot of opportunity costs and savings that exist within the whole program.
No, I agree, I mean, certainly, a lot of the furniture here needs to be replaced for the renovation.
I mean, certainly, office furniture and the two meeting rooms, we've held off on replacing that furniture for years because we knew we were coming to this. So that furniture we should've replaced, certainly in that room up there a couple of years ago, has some of the desks, or some of the other furniture, we just completely held off on replacing.
Of course, conversely, we're talking about renting temporary space, that's approximately six thousand square feet. Meanwhile, we're renovating and heating a space that's what, fourteen thousand square feet?
Right about that.
Something like that, so, you know, maybe not the most efficient use of space to begin with.
Well, the leased space isn't gonna, you're not gonna be afforded the space, this space.
I appreciate the update, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Someone check if we've got anybody signed up back there? Okay, at this time, I'd like to open the meeting up for public comments. George?
Yes.
Just for anybody speaking, just remember to state your name and address into the record, please.
Good evening, my name is George Mathias, I live at two-nineteen South Orange Avenue, apartment five-oh-one in South Orange, New Jersey. First of all, I would like to take the time to let you all know that periodically I do come up here and let you know about different concerns, et cetera, that I do have, and I would like to take this opportunity just to say and extend a thank you to all the members of the Board of Trustees, because I do realize you all try your best. So I just wanted to let you know you're all appreciated by myself and my neighbors in the building. I would also like to thank you all for your participation and the great job that was done on Fairview Avenue, including the better lighting and the roadway. It's excellent, so I would like to give you a thumbs up. My second item, I guess, for discussion, which will be brief, I was listening to the weather channel the other day, and they said, unfortunately, we should be prepared for another active hurricane season. So I just had a suggestion that if it's within the schedule, within the next few months before the height of the season arises, that if we can call in Ralph LaRosa and have a forum with him like we did with New Jersey Transit, and ask them, how is PSCNG preparing for the upcoming hurricane season, so this way eighty-five percent of South Orange will not be in the dark again? And that is my comments for tonight. God bless you all, and have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Gwendolyn?
Good evening, I'm Gwendolyn Slaton, I'm at six-twenty Prospect Street in Maplewood, and I'm here representing Essex County College. I'm the library director there, and we are asking for your support as we have applied for a bond issue.
A what?
Twenty-seven million dollars. I believe we sent, we sent a letter to the township, and many of us from the college, since the college does serve the entire county, have, are going to each town and asking for your support as we ask for this money and the bond issue, and ask you to send the support. The bonds, we have five projects that we're proposing, a completion of renovations to our West Caldwell campus, creation of a health sciences simulation lab, we call them the bodies. We're going to have bodies that will work with computers, and so students are able to function with these bodies as they are preparing before they go to work on human beings. The third is the reuse of space, our second level of our library, to develop an information commons. I'm the library director, so of course I'm interested in that one. And a campus-wide overhaul of the college's foundation for instructional technology that would lead to upgrade classrooms, computer labs, connectivity on the infrastructure, and the creation of specialized classrooms for rapid completion of developmental coursework. Some of our students need a lot of additional help, and we want to have everything there for them to do such. Therefore, we are asking that the college bond funding task force, and that's who's going out to all of the towns, and we're asking you to support our request for funding by adopting a resolution urging our state legislators to approve our Essex County College project. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you'd please leave your contact information with our clerk's office right here.
Sure.
Be happy to get some more information and follow up with you. Thank you. Alyssa Aronson?
Good evening, I'm Alyssa Aronson, I'm a longtime resident of South Orange. Good evening. Mayor Alex P. Torpey, trustees. Do you think that two-hundred-and-eighteen new apartments at Third Street and seventy-nine units at Biffis, total two-hundred-and-ninety-seven units, would supersede the rental market in South Orange? Will we eventually end up with destroying our rental units? Base, I'm sorry, base.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak at this time? Please come on up and state your name.
Frank Delgado, municipal liaison of South Orange from Essex County. Just wanna bring some updates on some events that are happening throughout the county in the month of May. May fourth is the Household Hazardous Waste Recycling Day, which will be in Cedar Grove at the Fleet Management Complex. It's on West Bradford Avenue, just for county residents and households only, not commercial operations. Then on May eighteenth is the Computer and Electronic Recycling Day, same location, starts at nine AM in Cedar Grove. Also, the Essex County, the annual open house will be held on May eleventh this year. Usually it's in June, it's in May this year, and the purpose of the open house is to bring every county department and agency to the Turtleback Zoo, so residents can come and see what everybody does in the county, so they learn about what the operations are. There's lots of games and giveaways and things like that, pre-admission that day to the zoo, that starts at ten AM, that lasts ten to two. And on May ninth, we're expecting our electrical aggregation bids will come back. We extended it by, by an additional week for an addendum that went out, and I know Trustee Levinson's been very active in the past on those bids coming back. We do anticipate the rates to go up slightly this year due to transmission rates, that is, that is assessed against all of the third-party suppliers. So once we get that information, it will be conveyed back to the village, to the village manager, and we need to award that contract the same day the bids come in. So it's urgent that we have it by three PM that same day. And we will be receiving the bids this year via an electronic format, and it's the first time we're doing that. We feel it opens up the market to players that are out of the area, and it also allows you to get the best pricing just prior to the bid, because the suppliers don't have to be there in person. So that's what we're working on, and I don't know if anyone has any questions or not, but...
Yeah, Mr. Delgado, could you, just for, maybe give a thirty-second synopsis for people that may be hearing for the first time about the energy aggregation? It's a really great program that you guys are working on, maybe could you share a little bit about it?
Absolutely. What we're doing is, we actually partnered with Hudson County. Hudson County has all of their municipalities participating in the program, and Essex County, I think we have nine of the municipalities participating. And what we do is, we go out to bid for a fixed rate, either a twelve-month or twenty-four-month period, based on how the pricing comes in, and by pulling all of the township together and having all of the two counties together and entities, utility authorities, housing authorities, any public entity that's within the two counties, we are able to save, we think significantly, on the cost of electricity. And right now, we're doing it for electricity, we are working on a gas program, but I know you were working on something separate here, but we are looking into that, too, in the future. We, we have added a few members for this year's bid, so we're excited about it. We have, it'll be about thirty-two entities participating, separate entities. So it's a big number, it's one of the largest in the state right now, and we look to build it, we're reaching out to some other counties, too, to see if we could pull them in for next year.
I have a question for Trustee Levinson in regards to this. Last year, South Orange participated, right? Would you be able to share with us the percentage in savings by entering in that program as opposed to the prior year?
Forty-seven percent.
Correct.
Forty-seven.
That's huge. So our, our costs went down in regards of electricity by forty-seven percent.
And shortly will be gas.
Okay, and now you're working on gas. That's huge.
It is.
Frank, I have a question, two questions, actually. Who's the person that I should get in touch with in the county respecting its solid waste plan? Because I, I have a, I have a question that doesn't really fall within household hazardous waste definition, but yet I don't know how to get rid of it, I don't wanna go into it, the details are not too interesting, but who, who's the person who handles county solid waste that I should call about that?
I could get you at, for the Essex County Utilities Authority, it would be Elmer Herman, I'll send you his contact information.
Okay, but at the Utilities Authority, they deal with the solid waste plan?
Correct.
Okay, that would be great. Appreciate it. And also, what, what was the county's reaction to the Scotland Road Improvement Plan? I know there was a meeting, what, what's going on with that?
Correct. Right now, what we're doing is, we're working on the restriping plan for all the crosswalks on the road. We wait for the spring, for when the paving contracts come out, because we don't have a paint truck. So that will be addressed, and hopefully our response will be forwarded to Village President Torpey from our engineering department.
Regarding all the rest of it?
Correct.
Okay, thanks, Mayor.
Thank you.
And Mr. Herman was very responsive.
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak at this time? Okay, seeing as there are no more members of the public who wish to speak, I'd like to close public comments and move on to the approval of minutes. The first is from March twenty-eighth, and everybody was here at this meeting, I believe, except for Trustee Bauer. Okay.
I move.
Okay, move by Trustee Levinson. Okay, moved by Trustee Levinson.
Seconded.
Seconded by Trustee Reisner. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And one abstention? The next two are the April 8th, 2013 conference agenda minutes and the April 8th, 2013 special meeting minutes. Moved by Trustee Reisner.
Seconded.
Seconded by Trustee Levinson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. We have several ordinances for second reading on this evening.
Yes, thank you. The first is ordinance 2013-05. This is an ordinance of the Township of South Orange Village, County of Essex, approving the application and financial agreement for tax exemption for an urban renewal project with respect to a portion of the Central Business District redevelopment area. This is located on block 2304, lots 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9.
Thank you. And we do have Joe Baumann, our redevelopment attorney, here tonight, who's going to do a presentation, giving an update on, this is for Third and Valley project.
Right.
Mr. Baumann? So before we get to our public hearing, go through these.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
This is a great moment for the village. I was looking at the timeline, and I think you began this process about 18 years ago, if you count the first resolution of the governing body to asking that the area be studied. So we're talking about block 2304, lots 3 through 9. It's a 2.7 acre parcel. Everyone knows it's Valley and Third. It's the current side of parking lot and pile of dirt. So as I said, the process began, we're going to give you a little history lesson. So the process began in 1995, when the trustees first directed the planning board to determine whether certain areas are areas in need of redevelopment throughout the village. You conducted public hearings through that year, and ultimately designated a number of properties as redevelopment properties throughout the area. In 1996, you continued the process, ultimately adopting the Central Business District redevelopment plan. And then later in 2002 and 2008, doing subsequent amendments to address the uses under that plan. That sort of brings us to the more recent involvement where, this is before we retained, but the effort was set forth to put together an RFQ. I got to tell you, it was pretty thorough, great job, by the way, the RFQ that was put out by the village. Nine entities participated as giving, providing with their qualifications that year. And then ultimately, you set up proposals and got two proposals. Among those two proposals, the superior proposal is determined by the small committee that was formed to review them, plus ultimately the trustees, were the Jonathan Rose companies. About a year, May of 2012, took about a year to analyze the proposal and ultimately sign a conditional redevelopment agreement. And so since May 30th of 2012, we've been working with Jonathan Rose to pull together the redevelopment project. One of the first things that became clear when we began the process was we're going to have to do a new plan for this particular block. Well, you had a redevelopment plan encompassed many properties throughout the village. And it really needed something that was targeted for this particular piece of property. And so through 2012, we went through the planning process to adopt the redevelopment plan that was ultimately adopted in 2013. So the project that is before your consideration today, it's two documents you're going to consider, a financial agreement, which deals with the payment of taxes, and then the redevelopment agreement. The project itself includes 521 space structured parking facility. There'll be 255 spaces allocated for public use. That is meant to replace all of the existing parking spaces on the existing lots that will be covered by the project, plus an additional number of spots, the number 60 to 70 additional spots for use throughout the downtown. So we're actually going to be increasing the number of public parking spaces available to the public from what is there today. It'll have 215 residential rental units, including 21 affordable housing units. There'll be 16 currently planned, 16 studio units, 116 one-bedrooms, 81 two-bedrooms, and two three-bedrooms. The two three-bedrooms are the affordable housing units, a requirement of the affordable housing rules. There'll be 3,000 square foot of retail space along Valley Street. And then the building will vary from height between three and five stories. This is all consistent with the redevelopment plan that you already adopted. At the end of the day, we have, you know, true transit-oriented redevelopment project, includes live, work. There's units that allow you to work on the first floor and live above, parking, and then retail. So the project costs, the total project, the total investment in the village by the developer through debt and equity is $59.9 million. So this project is going to represent a $60 million investment in the village. The sources of that money, the redeveloper himself, the redeveloper joint venture is going to put up $17.7 million of equity. They have $41.9 million of debt. And then there's a New Jersey Green funding source for about $300,000. This is how the money's going to get spent. The garage itself is going to cost about $10.4 million. The mixed-use project, $35.1 million. And the balances, the soft costs associated with the project, things like engineers, architects, financing costs, interest carry, things like that. So one of the things, because this project involves such a significant public-private participation, is the redeveloper provided and was required to provide their financial information. So we know through that information, which is also included in the application for a pilot agreement, the expected rents. So they're hoping to get $1,580 for a studio, $2,060 a month for one bedroom, and $2,980 for a two-bedroom. Their total estimated annual gross revenues, and this number is important, as we'll discuss a little later, because this is a number off of which the pilot is calculated at 10%. Their total estimated annual gross revenue is $57 million. Now, obviously, that number will go up over time.
Five point seven.
Five point seven million dollars. That number will obviously go up over time. As rents increase, the annual gross revenues will increase. The unlevered return on investment for this redevelopment-
And I'm sorry, Mr. Baumann, is that number based on full occupancy?
95%.
95%.
95%. Plus includes miscellaneous expenses, like if there's fees to use a gym or the parking fees. So it includes other, it's all the revenues that the project generates.
And what's, I know you have a lot more to get to, but what's the anticipated time it takes to get to that point? From the time they cut the ribbon, the doors open, they rent the first unit? What's the-
We could ask them. I'm guessing 18 months to two years? What do you guys feel about?
About 12 years.
12 years, there you go. How more aggressive?
Oh, from the time you break out-
No. You can't speak, they can't hear you, but from the time you open, you start renting units till the time you get to 95% occupancy?
Right. Right. Right.
Thank you.
So the answer's nine to 12 months?
Correct. Good point. Thank you.
People at home can't hear. Okay, this is a rendering of the project. You'll see, this is the corner of Valley and Third. You'll see this is where the retail is to the left. And going down Third is where the live-to-work units will be. And the garage is solely at the bottom corner. The financial agreement, which is the ordinance in front of you at this moment, provides for an annual service charge of, which is estimated to be $570,000, which is 10% of the annual gross rents.
And that, so that's at the nine to 12-month period, right? That's kind of where I was driving at. So the first few months, it's going to be less than that?
Yeah, this is at-
Full occupancy.
Yeah, once the project's stabilized. This is the, year one. And again, it goes up if they raise their rents 10%. Presumably, this number goes up by 10%. This is consistent with the pilots you did for the other projects in town like Biffis. Again, the annual service charge is based off of the annual gross revenues. That makes it a pretty easy number to calculate, so there's no, literally, they'll show you in an audit report, a redalit they received, we'll calculate the annual service charge and it'll be paid. It's a 30-year agreement. The annual service charge commences after the certificate of occupancy. So even though they may have only, so say there's $2 million in the first six months, well, then the rent will be 10% of the $2 million. So it's at the end of the day, a percentage of whatever they receive. There's also a 1% of the annual service charge, so that'd be 1% of the $570,000. That's an administrative fee annually to the borough to manage the annual, the financial revenue. And then there's periodic reports and audits that are also required to the financial. So we tried to do a total value estimate, and this is projecting out 30 years, so it's, you know, got, take for that. Annual service charge, assuming it goes up about 3% a year over the course of this project, that'll generate about $27.5 million of money to the village that currently won't receive, because as you know, this is exempt property. So that's $27.5 million new ratables to the village. The structured parking facility, the 255 units is valued at about $5.8 million. That's the cost of that structured parking that they're building and contributing for public parking. They've agreed to make a $1.1 million commitment to the borough to use for either, for any purpose we want. It's presumably, at least initially targeted, to the rescue squad relocation. You may recall when we met last time, that number was, I think, $750,000. And through the final negotiations, we were able to get that a little number higher. They're also making contribution to the affordable housing trust fund. So overall, there's a 20% affordable housing. 10% is going onsite, and 10% is through the same formula, 20,000 per unit is offsite for $440,000 to your trust fund. And then we valued the onsite affordable housing at about $2.4 million. So I was using a $110,000 per unit number roughly for affordable housing units. So in the end, you know, this is obviously a significant financial benefit to the village. The redevelopment agreement, which will be the subject of a resolution later in tonight's meeting, it describes the project, it sets forth a timeline, which I will go through with you. It may require that they do get lead certification, I forget which level, but lead certification for the project. Important to Trustee Bauer's request, we have negotiated an easement that will allow for the construction of a bike path by the township. There's a 10-foot, there's more than 10 feet, 10-foot easement, but it'll allow for a bike path which would run alongside the backside of the parking garage for now dead-ending into the property that is adjacent to it. This is the agreement that sets forth the affordable housing payment requirement, the rescue squad relocation payment, and guaranteeing the 255 public parking spaces in the parking So one of the things that we also, because we're really not getting paid cash here, we thought it was important to try and provide you with a dollar amount that you could attribute to the sale of your land. And we thought the best way to do that was to, really, the two things that are contributions to the village that are in the form of a payment and in the form of a facility, comes to about $6.9 million. So the structured parking facility, the 255 spaces, if we had to build them ourselves, that'd be worth about $5.8 million. And then, of course, the $1 million, $1 million cash contribution that we'll receive. That, one of the ways to think of the value of land is at a per-unit basis. So that would be about $35,750 per market rate unit. Affordable housing units are generally valued at zero. The price per acre is $2.6 million. So effectively, an accommodation of cash and a parking garage, we're going to receive about $2.6 million per acre for your property, $35,750 per residential unit. Those are very, right on the market for what's appropriate for this project. Here's probably what's most interesting to people, where are we going, what we're going to do next? They're pretty far along on site plan application, which they helped to file with the planning board almost immediately, signed the agreement tomorrow. I think they're planning on filing their site plan application immediately thereafter. We're going to begin the process of trying to be able to build the rescue squad. That should hopefully begin about October 2013. One of the first things you'll see between the July and October date is they'll immediately be doing borings in their lot. That's going to, we've already started coordinating with the parking authority. But you'll see right away that there'll be boring. That could happen within the next two weeks. But jumping back to the timetable, we hope to finish the construction documents. They would help to finish the construction documents for their project in December of 2013, finalize their loan documents in March of 2014. And the closing on the sale of the property itself, which would occur after all these things have occurred, would be April of next year. Our goal would be to have the rescue squad completed before that. Our current expectation is that there will be a one- or two-month lag between the closing on the property when the rescue squad has to leave and the completion of the new rescue squad. And we'll get into a little bit where that will go and how that'll work out. So we are currently anticipating that for some period of time, maybe no period of time, but hopefully a short period of time, the rescue squad will probably have to relocate to the firehouse. In June 2014, consent of construction, the garage gets completed first, and then the mixed-use project, April 2016. So you sort of laid out, it will take some time to get this done, but it's not an insignificant project. I think our expectation is that we'll beat most of these timetables, but we want to be So for temporary parking, we've been analyzing a number of different options in town. You may recall that Jonathan Rose identified a number of locations. We've had several meetings with the parking authority and the executive director. We're still sort of in that process. But I think we all feel pretty confident that there is sufficient spaces throughout the, opportunities throughout the village to allocate parking, it's 184 spaces. I'll coat those people throughout the village for the period of construction. And importantly, Jonathan Rose is responsible for paying us $200,000 to pay for all those costs. So for example, if we find a lot where we have to pay, if we have money to pay, but if we have to have a shuttle, the shuttle, people from back and forth from a new lot, we'll have money towards that cost as well. So there's $20,000 coming from Jonathan Rose to be spent on the temporary parking. So the rescue squad, which is, you know, a pretty critical component of what we're trying to achieve here, we looked at a number of different locations throughout the village. When I say we, Barry and his staff, not us. Looked at a number of different locations. This was identified as the best location. It's on Second Street. It was going to be the site, I think, of the temporary, the previous speaker was speaking about the temporary location for the offices for the village. That's no longer going to happen. So that piece of property is a great location and works out nicely in terms of putting a reasonably nice rescue squad that meets all the requirements of the rescue squad in the village, public safety and otherwise. Here's a rendering of what that would look like. It's going to, a couple of things we had to accommodate for, a 30-foot apron that's designed to allow the rescue squad, the ambulances to pull out and be cleaned, be brought out during the day and park. We needed some parking that's directly behind the rescue squad for those, the first, people that are coming on and immediately leaving in the squad, they need to be able to park and leave. You'll remember on the previous picture that there's plenty of parking, you can't see it, it's too small. But on, adjacent to both sides of the rescue squad, there's plenty of public parking that will be allocated to those people who are staying overnight or are not coming there on an emergency basis to park. So we'll have to allocate in those miserable parking lots, some rescue squad member-only parking for those people that are either staying overnight or coming to meetings or The rescue squad, we've had a lot of meetings and conversations with them. It's going to accommodate three to four vehicles. It's going to have a storage area and office on the first floor. It's going to be a two-floor building. Second floor, one of the things that we tried to accommodate in the building is the village apparently doesn't have sufficient shelter for emergencies. So the goal is to design, and we've done some preliminary designs, there will be a new design coming within the next week or so, but a shelter for people, for cots, up to 30 to 40 cots in case of an emergency. A bathroom, and then for the rescue squad, separate facilities where they would have a kitchen, a common area, bedrooms for overnight shifts, a full bathroom and shower. Then on the exterior, we're going to need some onsite and offsite parking, that's described to you, generator and storage. So we believe that all these things can fit onsite and can be done within the budget of the $1.1 million.
Did you say the square footage of the building, or anticipated square footage? I didn't see it on there, so.
So more than 5,000 square feet, 5,000, 6,000?
5,000 to 6,000 square feet. I'm just repeating, because people can't-
Five to 6,000 square feet.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
What is the current, or square, square foot of the existing structure that they're in now? Would you have any sense?
You know, Barry?
No, no, I know it's smaller.
Small.
Are you, are you told 2,600?
I think it's about 2,600.
They're saying 2,600 square feet currently.
Okay. Yeah, it's one level, too, so that's-
It's one level. And the big thing, I think, one of the significant differences is the area for emergencies for-
I get it, thank you.
Okay, importantly, while we have probably two of the most critical steps with you today, there's going to be a number of things we're still going to accomplish between now, and when I say us, I mean the village trustees are going to have to act on, consider, deal with over the next couple of months and year. First, we're going to have to do, because the rescue squad is being, the current contemplation is the rescue squad will be done by Jonathan Rose as part of redevelopment project. The rescue squad land is in a redevelopment area, but if there's no redevelopment plan. So we're going to have to adopt the redevelopment plan, go through that process for that particular site, the Second Street site. That's a plan. It'll be obviously much simpler than the one you did for Third and Valley, but they will have to do a plan and go through the planning board and village trustee process. We're going to have to negotiate and authorize a rescue squad construction agreement. We have a draft prepared. Again, the expectation is Jonathan Rose would do that. It's most likely to be going on a cost-plus contract. They'll go through a process where we competitively bid the subcontracts, they'll oversee the process, they'll get a fee for that, and that negotiation will have to happen. These things all have to happen before we close on the land, the conditions precedent to the closing of the land, on the land sale. We'll get to finalize the park, temporary parking arrangements, obtain the trustees' approval as applicable. It may be that we have to rent some property from some private individuals. Again, that money is being set aside and paid for by Jonathan Rose, but the trustees will have to approve that temporary parking. We're going to have to negotiate and authorize the public parking agreement. We're going to make, we want to make sure, and we've had a number of meetings with the parking authority on how this will operate, but we got to make sure that those 255 spaces not only are there in perpetuity, but we all understand who's maintaining them, who's overseeing, what's the security for them, you know, a number of significant operational issues to, so that how that property is, those spaces are managed going forward. This is one that is sort of a belt and suspenders. The current plan is, in order to move the rescue squad forward first, before the land closing occurs, Jonathan Rose has agreed to front the cost, the $1.1 million. But if something happens and we were unable to close, we can't meet a closing contingency and the deal doesn't move forward, they will affront it, the costs for the rescue squad, we will have a new location for the rescue squad. So as a standby, we're recommending that we do a bond ordinance that we don't expect to ever use, but sure of that, the village will have to sort of come up with the money to return the $1.1 million for the brand-new rescue squad that we would own to Jonathan Rose. The only other choice to avoid this would be to not, to have the rescue squad in temporary facilities for up to a year to two years, which didn't seem like a viable alternative to anybody. So it's, again, like I said, a fully funded ordinance, debt's never expected to be issued, but in order to protect the village, in the event that something would occur, you would end up with a new, you would ultimately get your value back because you would have a clean piece of property that you can sell to somebody else, but the rescue squad would have been located and the money would have been spent. And then we have a number of title issues we still have to clear up, nothing of any too significant we have, but we're still working through those issues, and then the electric wires have to be relocated. We've already had conversations with PSA and J. So those are the significant things to do next, but for today, next steps are the financial agreement, the redevelopment agreement, that's going to be immediately followed by the site plan application and efforts to begin to secure the temporary parking. We'll be, pretty quickly be finalizing the design for the new rescue squad and negotiating the couple of agreements I described.
Thank you for, I think it was a very clear presentation. Before we move on to the public comment period, are there any questions from any trustees?
Do you know if Jonathan Rose has done environmental due diligence on the area toward the tracks? In other words, not the former Cumberland Farms area along Valley Street, but the other area?
Other than reviewing the information we already have, you haven't done any court exactly?
Yeah, we haven't done court exactly.
If you guys, yeah, if you're going to comment.
Yeah, so we, we've done a phase-one study, and, oh, sorry, I'm Paul Woody from Jonathan Rose Companies. We've done a phase-one study on the entire site, and we will be doing borings, but mostly for geotech examination, starting in a couple of weeks.
Okay, and is the, is the 10 to 15-foot area, is that going to change title, but we're going to reserve an easement at the closing? Okay, in perpetuity? Okay. I had a third question, I don't remember what it was right now, sorry.
I have a number of questions and some concerns, but first, Mr. Bower, thank you very much for the presentation. I was really hoping we were going to see something like this for the, certainly for our benefit and most definitely for the public's benefit, so thank you. I appreciate the thoroughness and professionalism. It answered a number of my questions, but I do still have a few more. Sort of teeing up on trustee Bowers' question about environmental issues, so what happens if you find something? Or you find, you know, there's buried dinosaur bones, or an extinct turtle, or some, something on the site, what, how does that impact the project?
If it's something that can be managed, we'll clean it up, we'll come back to the trustees explaining.
At their expense?
At our expense. We're responsible for delivering the property clean.
When you say our, are you representing the village, are you representing them?
I've always represented you. I've never represented them.
Okay, so any cleanup is not.
I'm sorry, I do speak that way. When I think of our, I think of us.
Okay.
These are all in this together.
So any cleanup is done at the village's expense?
Yeah, but, but that wouldn't happen until we met with you and described the situation, decided whether you still wanted to go forward, identified the cost. The expectation is there shouldn't be any.
Right, knock on wood. Thank you. With respect to the parking deck, you talked about, obviously, the benefit and the value to the community, but I was reading the redevelopment agreement, and I want to read something here that I think is worth noting, saying that parking spaces will be regulated by the township, but the fees for the use of the public parking spaces will be set at a rate that will be sufficient to, along with any other funds paid to the township or the township parking authority, fund all garage operating expenses allocable to the public parking spaces, including but not limited to reasonable reserves, capital improvements, repairs and replacements, taxes, service charges and payments, in lieu of taxes, all are set forth in the parking agreement. So it sounds like the village is responsible, and again, this is layman's terms, so forgive me, don't, I'm not, the village is responsible for paying for the maintenance of our portion of the parking deck.
Yeah, I think the way we contemplate this, is the best way to do it will be for one entity to operate, maintain and manage the entire deck. That's the expectation, and then we would have to be responsible for our allocable share of whatever that will be. So round numbers I generally use is $500 per space, so 255 spaces times $500. It's generally sort of a ballpark of what it might cost for us to operate, maintain, do the caulking when it becomes necessary, set up a reserve for capital improvements. But we're going to be responsible for 255 of the spaces of those costs that we verify, that we order, and this will sort of be set forth in that agreement.
That's $500 per year?
Per space, per year.
Per space, per year, okay.
And just to put that in context, and I think this is really important for anyone that's watching, I believe commuters currently pay about $300 a year, so just to sort of stay status quo theoretically, and this is up to the parking authority, of course, they'd have to raise rates to be $800 a year to cover those additional expenses.
Absolutely. The first place to cover parking is by definition more, generally more expensive, but putting that aside, $300 a year would not be sufficient to, right now, the parking authority earns revenues off this lot, about $80,000 a year. And then the parking authority also has very nominal operational, maintenance expenses for a service parking lot. I guess that's obvious. So those two things, the goal would be to make those two things up. So the parking authority, I think their goal of not, to still have revenues and then cover these expenses, they have two choices. They spread it over to the system, or they put it all on the future commuters in the parking garage.
Just to be fair, we are already subsidizing the maintenance of our lot. We've been paying for the paving, striping and plowing, so we pay for it, we subsidize those spaces now. So you could say, maybe we'll continue to subsidize the spaces at the same rate, so instead of them paying 500, they pay 300, or we can say, subsidy's ended and now you're going to have to pay 500 a year, which are $50 a month.
We've argued for.
But we are subsidizing it now, so it's not, and we are paying for the maintenance now.
Right, but it's not 500 per space. And we've argued for a long time, the price there is artificially low, quite frankly, based on supply and demand, but clearly, the fee there, the cost will need to rise, whether it's to 800 or whether it's 400, the cost will need to rise.
You're assuming that the only revenue that could come from that would just be from daily commuters. There's other revenues that could come from there, so for instance, overnight parking is a big demand on weekends, they could charge for that. We also currently don't charge for parking on Saturday and Sunday, they could, they could charge on Saturday and Sunday. So the whole makeup for the revenue source does not have to come from commuters, it could come from other sources.
And you always subscribe.
And we always subscribe to, so it's, so I don't, there may be an increase, I don't think it's as much as you're leading at the big.
I'm just telling you the numbers he just said. And so I, as I understand the, the numbers in the spaces, I think you said there's.
I think there's currently 184.
Correct.
And we're going to get 255.
Right, but on, I don't know if this has been, there's been talk about moving spaces from the New Jersey Transit lot into this deck, so conceptually, there would be a net, not much of a net gain in the end.
The net gain we would get if we do that swap would be whatever spaces we keep in the Jersey Transit lot. So if all the daily permit users went to this space and we didn't have anything else, there was, I think there's a very little net, but there would still be some spaces remaining in the Jersey Transit lot that we would keep. Maybe we do part of it as a plaza, but we may keep some of them. I forgot the exact number, we were talking, I think, about 30.
Where does that stand? Is it, I mean, are there discussions ongoing with transit?
They've had initial discussions, but I don't know where the next one is going, so.
Okay.
We have to keep, we have to keep it going. We have to put pressure on it.
Can I interrupt for a second on the parking?
Yeah, I have a bunch of questions.
I just wanted to understand, you have, there's 188 spaces between, on the whole site?
Correct.
Right now, not just in the commuter area.
I think it's 184, I think, but yeah, something like that.
It's 133 for commuters, 50 plus.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that was the right number. Okay, thank you.
You talked about temporary parking, and I know, I've seen some internal documents on them, is that public? Is there any deals that are codified that you can say publicly where some of those spaces are?
I think we can say, we spoke to Mr. Said about his property, possibly. I think we can safely say that Jonathan Rose identified a number of spaces throughout, and then I think the parking authority may have some ideas, but there's, there's clearly some opportunities for spaces, and because we have $200,000 allocated to it, I think we feel pretty comfortable that it would be better, find some space that we might have to pay or pay for a shuttle to get people back and forth from a further distance. Generally speaking, during this time, sometimes the number of users drops down because people decide that it's just too much trouble, I'm just going to have someone drop me off at the train station, that might be 20%, that number might fall away. So it's going to be a bit of a, an art, an science. Clearly, the executive director of the parking authority feels like he's got a lot of solutions.
Okay, thank you. When you talked about the timeline, you talked about anticipating approval by the planning board by July 1st. I mean, that's two months away, and just having been in town and been doing this for a number of years, planning board approvals are inherently long and painful. I know you already went through them with the redevelopment plan, but won't there need to be traffic studies and parking studies and all these other experts that need to come and testify about us, for a project of this size, as we have done historically for other similar projects?
Yeah, all that has, all that's true. They've been working pretty hard to get ready, so I think they feel like they're going to be able to hit the ground running. They've already had preliminary meetings with planning board professionals, so I believe the process has begun informally, so I think that's why they're feeling, but, you know, I think it's aggressive, but I'd rather them go aggressive than take our time.
I just want to be realistic, managing expectations, that's my, that's my job.
Well, the key expectation is how fast we can get, get the building built, everything up until then.
Yep.
It'll slip and slide.
With respect to the rescue squad, glad we talked about the location, I'm glad you showed a concept plan, that was helpful. Help me understand, the whole idea of the cost, and that's still sort of nagging at me, the $1.1 million, I know that's all-in, and again, for all intensive purposes, it's a, it's a $1.1 million check, and we could theoretically, right, cash that and say we don't want to do a rescue squad. I'm not saying we're going to do that, but theoretically we could. But that's all-in, so that has to include architects' fees and construction and, you know, build-out and the entire soup-to-nuts project for a new rescue squad. Do we have, and do we have real tangible estimates from an architect, from somebody of what, all-in, what the project's going to cost? Just like we did earlier tonight for Village Hall, all-in, what do you think the project will cost?
I think, because it's not the most, it's just, it's not a particularly complicated building, I mean, there's an elevator, it's probably the most expensive thing in it. It's a big garage with a building on top. The sense is that $1.1 million should be a pretty good number, and we'll, you know, we'll be able to fine-tune that pretty, pretty quickly. You sound doubtful.
What's that?
You sound doubtful.
I am doubtful. I just think maybe construction alone, but by the time you fit it out, and again, design and architects, you know, all that stuff. And the other question, I guess, like, for example, the concept drawings you shared here, and there were previous concept drawings done on a prior site, are those deducted or those sort of sunk costs and the $1.1s above and beyond that?
They retained a, I think they retained someone for $5,000 to do those drawings that they didn't charge us for Jonathan Rose.
And likewise for like this concept plan that's in here?
Yeah, that was all part of the, they hired an architect, a local architect.
So that doesn't come out of the $1.1?
They already spent the money, I think.
Okay.
But it wasn't, I mean, it was, it was actually sort of a good evidence of Jonathan Rose's cooperative commitment to our project. You know, they spent a lot of time with us trying to figure out how to relocate the rescue squad, what the, we went through a couple drawings already with them on a couple different locations. They, they funded that, you know, all along the way.
Okay, just a couple more questions. With respect to the pilot itself, I understand, as you explained, that it's calculated based on 10% of gross revenue. My understanding, and I'm clearly not an expert in this area, there's two ways of calculating, either 10% of, by percentage of revenue or percentage of construction costs?
Correct.
Help us, correct me if I'm wrong, and I know some projects are done by, I think it's 2% of construction cost, which would have been a pilot of 1.2 million versus the 5.70. Help me understand the rationale for that calculation.
So it could be 2% of construction cost, it could be 15% of annual gross rents, 10% is the floor, not the maximum. So the pilot really could, could be a number of different numbers, and at the end of the day, the pilot really is supposed to be designed, what does the developer need to do his project? It's a butt-for test, a lot of municipalities think of it as, what's, what's the best we can get for, but it's really designed to, what's the, what's the most he needs to locate his project in their facility? And so the number was selected mostly as, by looking at what his return, so the return number that we, we showed you, the 6%, 6-point-something percent number, it's really driven by what they need to be successful and to go forward in the project. If we had negotiated, for example, to have it be 2% of construction cost, which it could have been, they couldn't do the project, maybe we would have to pay for our parking. We'd have to figure out another way, but they would not have been able to get the project underwritten, they would have not been able to commit the equity for that type of number because they would have, they wouldn't be making any money on the project, so they wouldn't do the project. So we would have to come up with another way. So the formulas have all different ways that you can attack them, but the basic premises when we're handling it up ahead of the village is, we want to make sure that they, we give them a pilot that's sufficient for them to do the project, but not create a windfall. And that's why we go through the trouble, make sure we understand all their numbers, what their rents are going to be. I mean, everyone, I think, would agree that those rents are pretty, I think they're pretty high. I hope they get them, and I think they will, but that's the rents they need to get the return, which I think is a reasonable return, not a huge return. So the number is really driven by what is the project needs, not really what the formulas would allow, or even perhaps what we want, because we would certainly take 20% of gross rents if we could, because that would be better for the village, but you wouldn't have a project, so you would really get nothing.
When we initially discussed this, we talked about certain things like breaking out the parking deck and whether we're going to pay for it ourselves, but the, but the idea was that we didn't want to lay out any money, we wanted, we wanted the, all the cost to be covered by the project, including, you know, so the parking deck and the rescue squad being the two, so that it didn't cost that money. But if we went ahead and paid for those, then obviously we could go to the 15% of rent because we'd be laying out the.
And the last thing that I didn't show, but there's, they're called staged increases, so every six years, you compare the pilot to otherwise applicable taxes. So for example, in the, and you compare it by 0, 20, 40, 60, 80 percent. So in the last six years, for example, if 80% of otherwise applicable taxes is higher than the pilot would be, if they pay 80% of otherwise applicable taxes. So the number I gave you was just sort of the straight annual service charge, but we actually negotiate with them. And in this case, with them, it's more aggressive than it is for VIFIS. VIFIS has a longer period, for his step up, these guys have a shorter period, I don't know if they realize that, they do now.
Uh-oh.
But they're, they're going to sign. So, so I think we'll get closer and otherwise applicable taxes quicker with that.
And to that point, and this will be my last question, with, what would full taxes on the site be? I mean, based on that size ratable, and do you have that number? And kind of the corollary to that, one of the things we had asked for last time, and I don't know if you came prepared or Mr. Lewis has it, is to show, you know, a comparison of the impact of a pilot on residential property owners. I know there's a lot of confusion and debate about pilots and their benefits and whatnot. And we talked about doing a presentation so people could understand, you know...
You say, "How does it impact taxpayers?"
Yeah.
So the impact on the taxpayers is $570,000.
I think the question is more for an individual taxpayer. And how does it impact the taxpayer in relation partly? Because we share a school system with Maplewood and when...
And if they paid full freight, what would be the impact?
When you look at the whole picture, we've done an Excel spreadsheet years ago showing that, you know, the savings, which I don't remember what it was per resident on a small pilot. But it wasn't enormous, but it actually... Because we share a school system with Maplewood, it actually makes it that the pilot becomes advantageous to the residents as a whole when we do a pilot.
Yeah, I don't know if...
And vice versa. When Maplewood does one of the Hertz South Orange, but they're paying 60% of that portion that's made up to the schools, plus that piece of property, the assessed value comes off the formula because the two towns, their share, the 58, 42 percent is based on the total assessed values. So if this piece of property was assessed at $10 million, that $10 million net comes out of the equation.
Right.
So pilot becomes very advantageous when we're doing one because we share a school district. If we didn't share a school district, it wouldn't be so clearly advantageous.
So Ellen may have done separate analysis. We traded emails. She was going to work on hers. I estimated that the otherwise applicable taxes were about a million three, of which the village would earn $361,000 as compared to the 570. So basically, double total taxes. If it was otherwise applicable taxes, it would be double.
Right.
Of that, though, the village gets, let's see, on a... The way I do it, it's .96 cents. But so the village gets about half of what the school district usually gets, right?
Well, but no. It's usually about a quarter to the village, quarter to the county, and half to the district. Rough number, real rough numbers.
Right, so the village gets half what the school district gets, right?
Yes, I'm saying it differently. Yes, you're correct.
Right. So but my estimate was the village would... It was otherwise applicable taxes, it was going to get $360 to $400 as compared to the 570. So you get $170 to the good.
But the school gets nothing, right? It's a difference.
The school gets zero.
The school budget doesn't change. The schools still get the exact same amount of money. It's just a matter of who's paying it. So the money's passed on to the residents. 42% to South Orange residents, 58% to Maplewood residents. But the school budget does not change because of the pilot.
There's actually some interesting legislation on that point because the school district, as you know, doesn't have to pay for tax appeals, right? So whenever there's a tax appeal, you've got to kick in the money. You don't get to get the money back from the school district either. So it kind of goes both ways.
If there was no pilot and they were paying a million three, the school budget still wouldn't change. It would just mean that each resident would pay a couple dollars less.
Mm-hmm.
That was all my questions.
At the end of the day, I'm recommending to you the annual service charge number and calculation because I think the project needs it to succeed. It's the right number for this project, for this to go forward. And to use one of the other formulas, the project wouldn't be able to sustain it.
I have a question for, I think, for someone from Rose. You talked for just a second about the work-liv concept for the first floor. I know a number of residents want to know what the first floor facade's going to look like and what's going to be in there. So if someone could speak to...
Yeah, that might be a good question for the Jonathan Rose.
Yes.
You talk about the flex space, not the...
The flex space. And if there's going to be any retail, I know people want to know what's going to be on that first floor.
Right, so the live-work units are going to be on the...
Third Street.
On Third Street, yeah, on the first floor of Third Street. And there'll be a slightly sunken courtyard that will be screened from the road, but will be publicly accessible. And they're going to be... Those units will be four or three units.
Just speak right, no, wait, right.
Those units will be four or three units that are accessible from the hallway of the apartment building and also the front of the building, right? So they'll have little landscape terraces in front of them that provides access from the street. And so essentially, the room in the front could be a bedroom, or it could be, you know, an office for an accountant or an attorney who wants to set up, you know, a little shop there and have clients come see them. So that'll be along Third Street. And then along Valley Street, there'll be 3,000 square feet of retail at the corner where the entrance is. And we've underwritten rents there where we think we can get... You know, we can be picky about the tenant we choose. So it could be, you know, we're aiming for a cafe or some sort of light food service that will activate the plaza that's being built along Valley Street. And then the remainder of Valley Street, part of it will be amenity space for the building. It will be active, like a gym or a party space that will sort of activate that plaza. And then part of it will be residential units.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Joe, I have the third question I remembered. What's... Is it 10% affordable housing?
It's 20... 10% off-site and 10% onsite.
Okay. And we have a sign-off document by DCA or something like that?
No, you can't get anything from DCA. We're just doing... We're doing our best to comply with the rules that are completely in flux with no stamp...
Because they keep changing.
Okay, but it's 10 and 10, so we should have no problem.
Yeah. It's 22 and 21 because it actually is 43. So it's 21 onsite, 22 off-site contribution here.
And that concept was discussed with Sean, who was the director down in Toa. And he, you know, as unofficially as he could, gave it the blessing that he thought that was a good effort at compliance.
Yeah, from my experience, you guys are doing a much better job at tackling portal housing than many of the other towns.
We want to keep it that way.
Yeah, absolutely.
Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Bowman.
Thank you. Great job.
At this time, I'd like to open this ordinance up for public hearing. So if there's any member of the public who wishes to speak on this ordinance only, please come forward. Okay, seeing as no members of the public wish to speak on this ordinance, I'd like to close the public hearing section for this and ask for a motion.
I move.
Moved by Trustee Davis Ford, seconded by Trustee Levinson. Do we have the roll, please?
Thank you. We'll start with Trustee Bauer.
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Yes.
Trustee Goldberg.
No.
Trustee Gould.
Yes.
Trustee Levinson.
Yes.
And Trustee Rosner.
Yes.
Thank you. So ordinance 2013-05 has been adopted on second reading.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Bowman, again, for coming in and Jonathan Rose for being here. I mean, this is a phenomenal project. It's bringing a tremendous amount of value to this town and...
I could just add in too to thank Aaron Law, who's sitting next to Joe, is an attorney in Joe's office. Does a lot of the legwork behind the scenes, doesn't get to go up to the mic.
She makes Joe look good.
Make her as well.
And also just reiterate what Mr. Bowman said earlier about Jonathan Rose being a cooperative partner, you know, in this project. I think we're all really excited about it and very happy with the way everything's been going. We have another ordinance for second reading this evening.
Thank you. This is ordinance 2013-06. This is a bond ordinance authorizing capital improvements, buying for the township of South Orange Village, appropriate in an aggregate amount of $1,830,000 thereof, and authorizing the issuance of not exceeding $1,738,500 in aggregate principal amount for the bonds and notes to finance part of the cost.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis or Mr. Levinson, is there anything you want to add about this this time?
Again, this, for anyone who wasn't funds in sort of the early portions, we can get a jumpstart on some of the projects. Specifically includes some roadwork on Kingsland Court, Kingsland Terrace, Ferinda Road, and Ridgewood Road, which will be combined in with the already previously funded Thorndale, as well as some really necessary stuff for the police, communications, some IT equipment associated with Village Hall.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open this ordinance up for public hearing. If there's any members of the public who wish to speak about this ordinance. Seeing as nobody wished to speak on this ordinance, I'd like to close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Move.
Moved by Trustee Levinson.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Rosner. Do we have the roll, please?
Thank you. We'll start with Trustee Davis Ford.
Yes.
Trustee Goldberg.
Yes.
Trustee Gould.
Yes.
Trustee Levinson.
Yes.
Trustee Rosner.
Yes.
Trustee Bauer.
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2013-06 has been adopted on second reading.
Thank you. There are several ordinances on first reading this evening.
Thank you. The first of our three ordinance tonight, this is ordinance 2013-07, an ordinance to amend the code of the township of South Orange Village. This will be Section 152-33, Schedule 1, with respect to parking on Western Drive North and Western Drive South.
This was an ordinance that was brought up at our last conference agenda. Is there anything anybody wants to add or any questions?
A question I want to ask. Have any of the residents that would be impacted by this decision, have they been notified or...
We're going to do it for second reading, right?
Yeah, that's what we would normally.
Yeah, that's what we would.
Because if it doesn't get introduced, we wouldn't notify.
Okay, all right. Okay.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, can I have a motion, please?
I'll move it.
Moved by Trustee Gould.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Goldberg. Do we have the roll, please?
Thank you. We'll start with Trustee Goldberg.
Yes.
Trustee Gould.
Yes.
Trustee Levinson.
Yes.
Trustee Rosner.
Yes.
Trustee Bauer.
Yes.
And Trustee Davis Ford.
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2013-07 passed first reading. Our second ordinance tonight is ordinance 213-08. This is an ordinance pursuant to New Jersey statutes Title 48, authorizing the license of certain premises, more particularly described in the attached agreement to Cable Vision of Newark.
We briefly discussed this at our last conference agenda as well. Is there anything... Any other questions that people have?
No, this is a new one, right, Steve?
No, no, this... You previously adopted an ordinance on this very matter. What happened is the wrong version of the lease agreement got attached to the ordinance. So this is really a correctional mistake that was made there.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So move.
Moved by Trustee Levinson.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Rosner. Do we have the roll, please?
Thank you. We'll start with Trustee Gould.
Yes.
Trustee Levinson. Trustee Rosner.
Yes.
Trustee Bauer.
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Yes.
And Trustee Goldberg.
Yes.
Thank you. So ordinance 2013-08 has passed on first reading. Our last ordinance tonight is 2013-09. This is an ordinance establishing the salary range for the deputy village administrator.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis, is there anything that you'd like to say on this ordinance?
No, again, this just establishes the range. The actual salary is already set by the appointing resolution. It was just this position wasn't in the previous position.
Sorry, just for the clarity for anybody watching, that this... The position that was here before was a clerical position, the assistant to the administrator. And this is a managing juror position, so it was a new position that was created for this job. Are there any questions, comments? Nope? Okay, can I have a motion, please?
Quick question. Barry, so the range is 80K to 95K. And I know we talked about this publicly, but what is the current...
88, 5, that was in the resolution.
So we're in the middle. I know, we're in the middle of the range. Okay, thank you.
I move.
Moved by Trustee Davis Ford. Seconded by Trustee Levinson. Do we have the roll?
Thank you. We'll start with Trustee Levinson.
Yes.
Trustee Rosner.
Yes.
Trustee Bauer.
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Yes.
Trustee Goldberg.
Yes.
Trustee Gould.
Yes.
Thank you. So resolution... I'm sorry, ordinance 2013-09 also passed on first reading.
Trustee Davis Ford.
I move that the ordinance is 2013-07, 2013-08, and 2013-09 be set down for a second reading and final passage at the May 13, 2013, meeting of the Board of Trustees, and that a public hearing be held at that time, and that the village clerk be authorized to take the necessary action regarding public notice of such hearing.
Moved by Trustee Davis Ford.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Rosner. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next is our consent agenda this evening.
Thank you. We have a number of resolutions on tonight's consent agenda. A resolution amending the rate of pay for the Baird preschool teacher and director in the Department of Recreation and Cultural Affairs. A resolution approving participation with the state of New Jersey in a safe and secure communities program. This is administered by the Division of Criminal Justice, Department of Law and Public Safety. Resolution establishing calendar year 2013 sewer user charge. Resolution hiring full-time laborers in the Department of Public Works. Resolution hiring 2013 spring and summer baseball and softball empires. A resolution hiring 2013 spring soccer referees. Resolution hiring a summer assistant pool manager. A resolution hiring a summer playground camp director. A resolution hiring a summer pool manager. Resolution hiring a summer pool staff. We have a resolution of the township of South Orange Village designating Third and Valley Urban Renewal LLC as the redeveloper of certain parcels in the village and authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement with the redeveloper. I believe we've stricken the next resolution. So that's the items on our consent agenda.
Okay, so the consent agenda is '073 through '083. Okay. Are there any questions?
A few questions. Go ahead, Howard.
I did just like '07 and '05. Does that include the special assessment? I was just going to look it up.
Yeah, the answer was yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Couple questions. Barry, could you explain number 73, amending rate of pay for a teacher and director? I feel like we've done this before.
I don't know if we did this particular one. We did one on one of the... Some of the resolutions went through using a form resolution where they were hired based on per class. I don't know if this is the one. Yeah, this was a teacher that was hired, and it's based on a per class, not a per hour. And but because we used the form resolution, which originally got appointed, it's stated per hour. And the classes have been compressed, the break time in between, so her actual hours there. She still teaches the same number of classes, and we still collect the same number of fees. But the hours were compressed. There used to be, I think, 20-minute breaks in between. Now there's 10-minute breaks. So it wound up... It was just clarifying what the original terms were.
Okay. Another question, number 76, hiring staff in public works. Are those replacements?
Yeah, these are replacements based on a retirement and a resignation from actually from last year. Because the process that Mr. Machete goes through is, he brings people in on a part-time base. Not... I mean, it's full-time, but it's like a...
Temporary.
Temporary seasonal up to the six-month limit, which really works out great as a trial period. So both of these gentlemen have been with us and have proven themselves, and these are replacements of, you know, positions that we had. One was a resignation, taking a position. Another was a retirement.
So there's really no change in the headcount.
Correct. And obviously savings because they're coming in at entry level versus both gentlemen that left were at that point in their respective positions.
Okay. And last, I'd like to request that 83 be voted separately, redevelopment agreement.
Okay.[1623.62]
I have a question on the employee resolution. I had asked for, if possible, to get tables of organization for each one of those groups.
Yeah, I saw that, and she's going to pull it together, and I, I'll talk with you a little more in terms of the level of detail, particularly on the sort of summer seasonal. Can they just be lumped under lifeguards? And you're not going to break down a home even in that level?
Well, there is a certain plan that's associated to how that's structured.
Right. No, I had seen your email, and I've spoken to Kate, and we're working on it, and I will probably bring you the loop to make sure it meets what you're looking for.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so we're voting on 073 through 082.
Yes.
Could I have a motion, please?
So.
Moved by trustee Bauer.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Gould. We have the roll, please.
Thank you. Trustee Rosner.
Yes.
Trustee Bauer.
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Yes.
Trustee Goldberg.
Yes.
Trustee Gould.
Yes.
And trustee Levinson. So the consent agenda has been approved. Resolution 083 has been removed for separate action.
Okay, why don't we start with our first resolution for separate action?
Thank you. This would be resolution 2013-007. This is the cash management plan. It was tabled back in January, so we would first read a motion to remove from the table.
I'll second.
Okay, moved by trustee Levinson, seconded by trustee Rosner. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Are there any questions on the resolution?
I move.
I second.
Moved by trustee Levinson, seconded by trustee Davis Ford. We have the roll, please.
Thank you. Trustee Rosner.
Yes.
Trustee Bauer.
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Yes.
Trustee Goldberg.
Yes.
Trustee Gould.
Yes.
Trustee Levinson.
Yes.
Pick you twice, didn't I?
I know. Let's have that happen again.
Okay. We now have resolution 2013-083. This was removed from the consent agenda for separate action. This is the resolution of the Towns of South Orange Village designating Third and Valley Urban Renewal LLC as the redeveloper of certain parcels in the village and authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement with the redeveloper.
Do you have a motion?
I move.
Moved by trustee Davis Ford.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Gould. We have the roll, please.
Thank you. Trustee Bauer.
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Yes.
Trustee Goldberg.
No.
Trustee Gould.
Yes.
Trustee Levinson.
Yes.
And trustee Rosner.
Yes.
Thank you. So resolution 2013-083 has passed.
Trustee Goldberg.
Thank you. Trustee Levinson, the bills?
Yes.
The Board of Trustees has been provided a copy of the bills list prior to the meeting for examination. I move, with the exception of the ones that I've noted in the email, to be moved.
Moved by trustee Levinson.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Rosner. Unless there's any questions, can we have the roll?
Thank you. We'll start with trustee Davis Ford.
Yes.
Trustee Goldberg.
Yes.
Trustee Gould.
Yes.
Trustee Levinson.
Yes.
Trustee Rosner.
Yes.
Trustee Bauer.
Yes.
Thank you. The bills list has been approved.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open the meeting up for our second public comment period. If there's any member of the public that would like to comment.
Anybody still awake?
Anybody still awake? Okay, seeing as there are no members of the public who wish to comment, I would like to close this public comment section and move on to new business. Trustee Goldberg, update on administration status reports?
Yeah, just a follow-up. We talked about this, I'm looking at my notes, September 24th. We talked about January 14th. What can we do to get regular monthly status reports? Now, I know Adam is anxiously awaiting to write them.
Adam can attest, I think this is the first thing I hit with, the first Monday he was here, is our reports, department head reports, standardizing some forms. We've talked about it to a certain degree, and he's working on it. We work on it, and I've made the commitment, and you will see a difference soon.
I have a comment to make after that statement. Welcome, Adam. How was your first week?
So we're going to get administrative reports every other week, and department head, monthly department reports.
When is the full month submitted?
Every other week or monthly? What?
This is like a going-away present for trustee Goldberg.
I'm sorry, did you say every other week or monthly?
He said every week.
Oh, okay.
Twice daily.
Monthly, right?
I'm upping the bar.
Okay.
You have to make up for the past years, we need to do something.
Just tweet.
Trustee Gould, update on the Church Street, South Orange Ave property?
Yeah, I believe that Mr. Lewis may have an update on that. I don't know what he can say publicly. You might have had a meeting with the property owner, and something you want to talk about?
Yeah, and Mr. Baumann already alluded to it, that we met with the owner for a couple purposes, one of which to try and gauge his intentions and plans to move forward with redevelopment, but also related to the potential availability of that parcel for interim parking. He has expressed a willingness and interest in an agreement that would involve demolition of the building, utilizing the entire parcel, including the currently vacant space for interim parking for a period of time, coordinated with the Third and Valley lost parking. That, based on the parameters that we're talking about, it was well within, it would only use a, you know, not even half, but a smaller portion of the available funding Jonathan Rose has committed to spend to make available $200,000.
How many spaces would that hold?
Preliminary estimates from our village engineer is somewhere between 60 and 70.
I should add that, you know, Initiative Development Committee or Subcommittee Development Committee met with Said about this property and all his properties, and came up, and he, when he expressed the interest, I turned it over to Joe Baumann and Barry, because I didn't think it was right for the development committee to negotiate a deal. So that's how the conversation got started, though.
And is there anything you can say about his future plans?
He has no money.
He has no plans?
He has no financing. He has plans, he has no financing.
Nothing more, I just don't know what you can say, yes.
He basically said he would entertain any partner that was willing to work with him.
No, and we did try and gauge what, you know, what his intentions were, both in terms of that property, you know, his willingness to entertain a partner and/or his willingness to sell the property. Had some pretty spirited discussions.
Did you say partnering?
Well, he mentioned partnering.
With who? Not with us?
Not on.
Oh, okay. All right.
Certainly, there are a number of developers who have expressed an interest in the event he was willing to, you know, there were reasonable terms, negotiations. So he's expressed that he would entertain that. Now, reasonableness is in the eye of the builder, so.
He also.
That is, that is the word, reasonableness.
He would, whether he does find financing with another partner, they still have to go back to the planning board. They, there's a couple of things that would have to be changed or completely modified. And there's a couple of developers who said they'd reach out to him and talk to him about it, so we'll see.
And the properties, of course, adjacent and contiguous to the transit lot, you know, so to the extent there's potential to connect it into something, you know, there's been discussion of whether we can get construction parking on that back transit lot as well. This could be tied into that, rather than, there is currently an approval for, what is it, 20 units?
20 units and 9,800 square feet of retail.
Right, and 36 spots.
Restriction, no restaurants.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, trustee Bauer, RFP for removal of contaminated soil along River Greenway.
I think I can address really all three of these together as one subject, but let me just say that in the future, if, if something is negotiated with Said about that property, you might want to keep in mind the idea of where the bike path crosses South Orange Ave to put it on the west side of the building that houses Reservoir and, you know, those other stores west of there, because when Exxon was rebuilt, the river committee and the Transportation Advisory Committee had gone out there jointly to figure out whether there was enough room to go sort of straight across where the river is located through the, I'm just going to use the word right-of-way, even though it's not really correct, but the right-of-way between the reservoir building and Exxon. And there really is enough room there to get in and out of the driveway safely. It's a little tight, but I was persuaded that it was possible. However, when Exxon was rebuilt, they moved their pumps closer to the reservoir building, making it more difficult to, for a vehicle to turn in there, turn into the pumps, and then go on their way, creating more of a conflict with any bicyclists that would be, or pedestrians that would be essentially walking across the Exxon driveway with traffic, mostly going in, not going out. But, so just, you know, keep that in mind, because I think that's a possibility. And the existing structure does actually have a driveway through it, which is still there. I mean, it's not knocked down. So it's not in the place that would be most advantageous, but it was part of the building. The, when the river committee met, the engineer made a strong pitch for getting this work off the dime, which is the contaminated soil that was revealed during the green acres mandated, DEP mandated soil testing before the banks were done, and this is in the middle school reach, so it's between Mead and South Orange Ave. We have to do something about it if we're going to take the money, otherwise we have to turn the money back. So, you know, the money's for the project, and while the village engineer is desirous of using the same firm that already did the environmental assessment, that is Brinkerhoff, he's of the view that we have to send out an RFP because of the pay-to-play ordinance restrictions. That was essentially fine with us, we just want to move it. Same thing really, well, slightly different, but, you know, same essential problem with the trail work on the east and west side of the river south of Third Street. And what that means is trail work that we requested be included, that is what I talked about at the last meeting, the trees and branches and everything that came down in the hurricane that is in the wooded area south of Waterlands. We wanted to know if that could be included in Tom Machete's otherwise tree bid, so on and so forth. And on the west side of the river, it would be to you, ask the tree firm if they had these skills or do an RFP, to cut a path through the, you know, sort of Bramble and Greenbrier from the base of the access road out to Chiswick, because it's completely overgrown. There is sort of like a little path there, but, you know, it's been overgrown for years. And that way, you know, because we're still waiting for funding, we have no idea when transportation funding of any, you know, real significance is going to come through, that would at least create the, you know, a pathway, you know, like a 10-foot pathway. I don't think it would be very difficult to do, and I think it would be very cheap. So that was the idea of sort of low-hanging fruit that we could come up with to advance the project. That could be included in bids that are already happening or going to happen. As for the repairs and improvements to the skate house and duck pond, that was actually more trustee Levinson's request, who was kind enough to come to the meeting, thank you. But the plans for that, not detailed construction drawings, but pretty, pretty far along, the plans for that were done by Saratoga Associates and Hatchmont McDonald. Over the last two years, they're done, and they're just waiting to go out. So if we want to do the, fix the retaining wall of the duck pond, which desperately needs it, clean out the pond, you know, muck out the pond, dredge it, fix the skate house, bring it up to, you know, a decent standard with new bathrooms, essentially is what it amounts to, but otherwise, you know, it's sort of a, a bit of a modernization, then we should send these out. And I just spoke to Steve Rother as the meeting started, because we had a debate at the, at the, at the river committee because of the engineer's frustration with having to send out an RFP when we already have Hatchmont McDonald, the civil engineering firm, who's done this work, not being able to continue on it. So is it fair to say that, that you will look at that, or is it fair to say that you think we absolutely need to have an RFP?
No, I'll, I'll look at that again, but, but I, I thought the statute was relatively clear, and the way I read the initial resolution approving only Phase 1. The, the way it should have been done would have been to say, we're approving Phase 1 and Phase 2 and 3 subject to funding availability. That would have held the door open on Phases 2 and 3, but the way the resolution was adopted, it only approved Phase 1.
So what happened in view of the pay-to-play ordinance restrictions, what we did is we, we sent out a competitive bid. Saratoga and Hatchmont McDonald were chosen, and we wanted to have a, a team that would design the entire project and move forward. So we understood that we were working within the restrictions of the ordinance to have a long-term but divisible project, contract, excuse me. So we incorporated all of the phases, which I think are called 1, 2, and 3 at that point, in, in the resolution, and that was approved as such. In other words, incorporating all of it, but we only awarded Phase 1 because that's what we had funding for at the time. So it was our view that we had done it correctly in order to have a long-term but divisible contract, because it fits the, I think it was the Second Amendment to the ordinance, which is when you anticipate that there are going to be further phases and you don't want to, you know, you've gone through the education essentially of the firm, you don't want to have to start all over again. So Steve's going to take a look at that, but these RFPs, we would request that these come back and go out, look at the bids. It doesn't commit you to anything. I mean, obviously, if we don't really have any intention to do it, you don't want to do it, because you don't want to have RFPs out on the street that you don't intend to fund. But some of these are pretty low-hanging fruit. I would say there was not consensus on the, total consensus on the duck pond improvements, but there was total consensus on the skate house, and the rest of it is just sort of cheap cleanup, cut the bushes and clean up the trees and, and repave the path, repave the path in the wooded area south of Waterlands.
Janine, when you say consensus, are you talking to the river committee or the open space committee?
River committee.
Because I remember a few weeks or months ago, we talked about reconvening the open space committee, right? I mean, we have a laundry list of projects. We, I assume you want to use open space money for these, so we have a laundry list of projects and, you know.
But this, but this particular, the duck pond, for instance, was in our capital budget for this year.
Yeah.
I forgot how much money, but we put a.
I'd be happy to convene the open space board, but the, the village tasked, when we went out for bid on this, this is going back to, I don't know, it seems like 2010 now, but the village tasked us with doing the skate house and the duck pond, that is not really in the purview of the River Greenway, and we said, sure, we'll be happy to supervise it, and we did do that.
These are really more, I don't know.
So I don't really want to take two steps back now.
These are renovation or maintenance projects, they're not really necessarily.
Yeah, exactly. And, and we just.
I'm not sure the open space committee.
We just, we didn't volunteer, we were asked, but, you know, we were happy to do it, and I think a good job was done by the team. And like I said, we had some minor issues still, I think, with the duck pond that we weren't completely had reached consensus, but otherwise, these are kind of no-brainer maintenance projects, and, and safety too, that need to be done.
To follow up on Michael's point, we did promise to reconvene the open space committee, but for instance, the trail going from the, down to Chiswick's field, would clearly be something we'd want the open space committee to review and look at, and see if there's a way to, to improve upon that, not just make it a trail, but to do other things along there. And they can work with the river? No, you don't want to do that? No, no, we had a walkabout last Friday of, of looking at that trail and basically cleaning it up. The problem is, is that it's in the flood plain, and what I think the conclusion was is to put down woodchips, you know, 10-foot.
Yeah, we're just going to have, ask the Boy Scouts to put woodchips down.
We shouldn't have asked Brett Propheta tonight if he wanted to contribute to this one like he did for the one in Maplewood.
That's another whole subject.
We missed an opportunity here. Want to invite him back next month?
Okay. Which is rare. I have one other thing to say, and that is the citizens, the senior citizens advisory committee is going to be issuing a draft report on Wednesday. I'll send it to all of you, and we're going to send it to the people that we identified who agreed to review it, and we would like to release it the first week of May. So if you could get comments back to us like in a week, we would really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, unless there's.
One, one quick item, I know you don't have new business listed separately, one quick item. East Orange Water, I'm actually, this is for Barry. The village website has not been updated this calendar year with the village testing results for East Orange Water, and I've sent you several emails on it. Can you share an update on where we are with those results?
Yeah, and we, I had sent it, and I, I got to go back and check. There was a problem with the sampling was done at Crest Drive, and then, long story short, the pipe froze, it was shut off. East Orange Water couldn't get out, find the shut-off valve. We eventually coordinated, and there was a sample, and I thought it was on the website. I'll have to double-check that. By the time all this came to light, evidently the guy that showed didn't take the sample. Then when we started looking for results, it's when this came to light, it was out in March and just was out again recently, so there would be a March and an April result. I thought the March was already on the website. We wound up having to coordinate, and he's getting it out of the pump house instead, because this, they still haven't fixed or found the shut-off valve up at Crest Drive, and there's still no water in Crest Drive.
They have to change the meter.
Now they just have to change it with it. They now fixed it, and just have to change the meter, okay, because there was, as of yesterday, still no water at Crest Drive. But, but so there, if it's not on the website, there is a result from March, and there will be, there should be one momentarily on, from April. So it was during January and February, we were not made aware by the lab guy, that I guess he showed up and couldn't get water and didn't tell anyone, and just left, so. But as soon as it brought to our attention, then we tracked all this down through East Orange Water, and we did find it off the site, so if the, March 1, I will make sure it is posted tomorrow. I know I got the result, and I know I forwarded it, but I will, I will make sure that's up and if April results, then we'll get that on immediately as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned.